This conference will now be recorded.
Good job, Dick. Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. Okay.
You haven't got Arch yet.
Arch or Dave?
I don't think so either.
I like the new backdrops.
Yeah, fancy, huh?
When did you get those?
Last month when we started having to sit in little closets to hold our meetings.
Awesome, awesome.
I think you need one, Paul. There's a lot of valuable stuff in your background there.
Got a little flag with company name way up there somewhere.
Well, it's easy to get distracted. Darcy has birds that fly around in her house while we're... She's got a Beretta bird, sulfur-crested cockatoo.
Very good.
All right, I got Gina Williams. That's probably Dave, huh?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it was Gina.
One, two, three, four, five.
Hey, Mayor. On the, this is Ron, on the agenda that came out, the hyperlink for the go-to meeting would not activate off Acrobat. So I had to write it down and type it all back in again. I didn't know if anybody else had that problem. I didn't know if you protected your PDF files for your agendas or not, but I couldn't open it with Link.
From the agenda?
It was the same.
From the packet?
Yes.
From the packet and the agenda?
Yes. I had to write it down and re-can and make it work.
Hey, Ron, this is Dave. On an Acrobat document, you have to hold the Control key down, then, then click it to go for a hyperlink.
It does, I tried that, Dave. It didn't work for me. It's not working with the, the Control button. And you can't, it's, it's not a big deal, though.
Yeah, it didn't work for me.
Mayor, you have Dave. I think we're just missing Arch unless he called in.
For someone that doesn't know, and then...
Who's the blank screen there?
The backdrop is Frank Robbins.
Okay, I got DB.
Yes, except for Councilor Davila.
Okay. And we know he's around.
I'll check on him while you get, while you get going.
All right, so... We... We close executive session at 6:31 PM. We will now reconvene from executive session in the open session to act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding A) consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item, and B) discussion, B) discussion regarding the lease agreement with Baker's Barbecue.
No action.
All right, so the regular council meeting will begin at 6:37 PM. Sandra, please note, we should have everybody in attendance. Arch was at the last one, so I know he's, I know he's here somewhere. But everybody was in attendance. It should be in attendance for this one. Regular meeting will be conducted using video tele... Oh, I don't need to read that portion of it. All right, citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Josh, did you have anybody write in for this section?
Mayor, I do not have anyone in general, but I did have a comment that I think we could use here from Mr. Roberts, if you're good with that now, Mayor.
All right, and I do have something for Mr. Roberts as well, so... So, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Paul Roberts, 5312, Mayor of Lagavista. So, following up, I've already appraised everyone on the council with my intentions. And I think most of you have seen the post on Facebook. I've got everything lined up. Father Raj from St. Mary's has given us his blessing to distribute these surgical masks to everyone in the parking lot there. I will post a map online. I shared it with you via email. Do all of you have that, councilman? Does anybody not have it?
The map?
Yes, sir.
I have not received that unless it just came in recently. I haven't looked in about an hour, so...
I sent it about an hour ago via email to each of your email addresses.
I received it.
Okay.
I have it.
In short, it's a map that I'll share with everybody, and what that map shows is where people will enter on Civic Drive off Alomans Ford, as well as off of Deer Run, similar to when picking up children from the elementary school after school. Everybody queues up, one vehicle, one vehicle, one vehicle, one vehicle. They'll merge into that side parking lot of the church off of Civic Drive, which is maybe 15 feet of gravel, and everybody will flow through the side of the church there. There will be up to 10 volunteers, including myself, handing out masks spaced one car apart. People can hold up how many they need, one, two, three, crack their window enough to get the mask through the window. There you go. Have a nice day. Pretty straightforward, pretty simple process. I have, these are the masks, elastic bands. These, this is a package of the plastic face guards that would go over a person's face to protect them. Goggles are ideal as well. And I have some K-95 masks that I will distribute to anybody who does not have one. I've also got gloves, which people can use. We will hand these out until they're gone or until 3 o'clock. Remaining masks will be distributed to area churches for them to further distribute as they see fit to the community. I think that's been, I've also hired Sergeant Smith from the Lagavista Police Department there to help with any traffic needs as people exit the church parking lot, similar to what the needs might be for a church, a busy church service on a Sunday afternoon. He'll be there assisting with that as well. What else can I share with you? That's about it. I'm gonna get there no later than 8:30 in the morning, and we'll be minding all of the social distancing guidelines, and everybody will be in protective PPE, and the vehicles can roll their windows down just to keep it as safe as possible. And that's it. Saturday, 9 AM to 3 PM, and I hope everybody comes out and gets a mask so that they can adhere to the directives from the county judge and that we can help keep commerce flowing in our municipality. Josh is demonstrating how to wear the mask. Notice he is touching the bands and not the mask itself. You touch the mask, you contaminate it. If anybody has ultraviolet lights, ultraviolet lights, I forget the wavelength. I think it's 300 megahertz plus. You can Google it. If you happen to have an ultraviolet light at the right wavelength, you can sanitize these every day. That's it.
Paul?
Yes, sir.
Are your volunteers wearing face shields?
Yes.
Okay, so in attendance on this meeting, you can't see his picture, but you see GJ, that's Greg Johnson. He's our EOC Assistant Director. He has some face shields. If you need them, let me know. I can put you in contact with Greg Johnson, and he can get you some face shields for your volunteers.
Thank you. I appreciate the offer. I have these. I would rather the city keep those. You guys interact with the public, but thank you for the offer. One thing that would be appreciated, Mr. Mayor, are some of those orange cones. If I can borrow some of those from the city, and I can return them Monday?
I can make that happen, Mayor.
Very well.
Josh, how, was that you, Josh, that said that? How would you, how do we facilitate that? Would you, do you want to touch base with me tomorrow morning?
I'll text you now, and I'll figure out, we'll figure out a number, and we'll get them, and, and if I just deliver them to you or drop them off at the house or put them up at the church, I can get them to the site.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. We have 10 people, just for what it's worth. You know, a lot of times people sign up for things, and sometimes people no-show, including myself, my wife. There's 10 of us. And so far, I have three people confirmed, so if any of you would like to volunteer and help out, it's appreciated. If we have enough volunteers, there's no need for people to stick around. But if anybody would like to help out, and you have your own protective deer, or if you need some, I can provide you with some. I've got like 150 of those gloves. I've got 20 of these face shields, and I've got plenty of these face masks. So, I'll leave it at that. If you do intend to participate and volunteer, any of you can find the post on Facebook, and you can message me there if you don't already have my contact details.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, there's, there's any of the council members? Let's see, Dave, you have anything to share?
No, I'm good.
Don?
I'm good.
Arch? I don't see Arch. Tim, you got anything?
I'm good. I'm good.
Dick?
Not at this time.
All right, and Frank?
Okay.
All right, well, I've got a couple of things here. This is the third year that I know of, at least, at least my third year. I have been asked to put forth this proclamation. This is from the Independent Motorcycle Riders Association, I believe, that's who it is. But so, the month of May, as we know from years past, is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. So again, this year, I have a proclamation, and it says, "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Lagavista, recognizing May 2020 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Lagavista, Texas, Travis County, Travis County, Texas. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I, Ed Tidwell, Mayor of the City of Lagavista, Texas, do proclaim and declare the month of May 2020 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Lagavista, Texas, to be affixed this 16th day of April 2020." I don't know how much motorcycle riding is going on these days, but just be aware of motorcycles. And secondly, I was approached by Keep Lagavista Beautiful. They are, in their gardening and beautification efforts, a lot of the stuff that they are doing includes habitat for monarch butterflies. And so they had hooked me up with the National Wildlife Federation, and they have an urban monarch conservation plan that they are pushing nationwide, and they're trying to get a lot of support from mayors of cities, and I agreed with KLVB to assist them in the urban monarch conservation. And as part of the, part of my pledge as the mayor, I agreed to put forth a proclamation for the urban monarch butterfly conservation. This proclamation reads, "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Lagavista, recognizing the National Wildlife Federation's urban monarch conservation. Whereas monarch butterflies numbered around 1 billion in 1996, today their numbers have declined significantly as a result of numerous threats, particularly the loss of habitat due to cropland conversion, urban development, and agricultural practices. Whereas degradation of wintering habitat in Mexico and California has also had a negative impact on the species. Whereas mayors and other local government officials play a pivotal role in advancing monarch butterfly conservation in urban and suburban areas. Whereas the City of Lagavista, along with members of KLVB, will commit to create habitat and educate citizens on how to make a difference at home or in their community. And whereas the National Wildlife Federation has put out a list of 25 action items to help save the monarch butterfly. Now therefore, I, Ed Tidwell, Mayor of the City of Lagavista, Texas, do proclaim and declare that I, as the mayor, take the mayor's monarch pledge and commit to taking at least three actions from the list to help save the monarch butterfly. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Lagavista, Texas, to be affixed this 16th day of April 2020." Ed Tidwell, Mayor. And as a side note, PS, remember, researchers have found that spending time in nature strengthens a person's immune system, reduces stress hormones, and lowers blood pressure. Furthermore, it may improve learning and increase empathy. So during these shelter-in-place times, don't forget to get outside and enjoy some outdoor recreation and activity. And that is all that I have. So unless anybody, I don't see a hand out there, so I'm gonna move on to public hearing and possible action. First consideration. The Lagavista City Council will hold a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to Section 17 of Chapter 14 of the Lagavista City, Lagavista Code of Ordinances to allow for the addition of a detached accessory building, which is a gazebo, within the required rear yard setback at 4064 Outpost Trace, which is in Country Club Estate, Section 9, Lot 2230 Alpha. And I'll open the public hearing at 6:51 PM. And I will go to, let's see, number three here. All right, so we're looking at a gazebo, and this was brought forth to planning and zoning because they are applying for a conditional use permit. They're wanting to locate this gazebo on an existing concrete slab. I think those of you who have looked at your agenda have seen the pictures. That concrete slab was identified to be sitting in the 25-foot setback. The applicant indeed confirmed that the slab and gazebo is exactly nine feet, seven inches inside the rear property line, which puts more than half of the gazebo in the encroaching setback. However, with the fact that the slab is already existing, and based on the fact that there was no objections from any of the neighbors, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this application. So we are discussing that and possible consideration of this tonight. If we do take action and it is approved, the gazebo that's pictured in the packet would be added to the existing slab. No additional accessory buildings could be added to that property without a new conditional use permit. So this would just give them permission to build that one accessory building, that being the gazebo on the existing slab. And if it's denied, then they either don't build a gazebo, or they build it somewhere else. If they build it somewhere else, they'll still have an existing slab in their backyard. But they will either have nothing to, you know, they can't use, or they'll have to, or remove it if they so choose. Anybody? Staff, do you have any further direction on this, Josh or Roy? No from Roy?
No, sir.
No from Josh? All right, councils, anybody have any questions? My list. Dave, you got any questions?
No.
Don?
No questions.
Arch?
No, sir.
Tim?
No questions.
No questions. Dick?
All I would say is I did go by and look at the slab. I can't see that putting this gazebo on this slab would in any way interfere with anybody else's view or would distract from the area. And I think that the neighbors giving their approval says that this is, is something that we probably should go ahead with.
And I don't know how many notices were sent out, but all the ones that came in were in favor, so...
Correct.
Frank?
No questions.
Mayor, I will share that we didn't send in a response, but our property is the closest property to where the gazebo will be located. And we agree with Mayor Protim that the location is, is a good set for their lot and that it does not create any type of obstruction to the surrounding property.
All right. Let's see, number three. Did we, did we have any citizen comments, Josh, on number three?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Well, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:56 PM. And now it is open for council discussion and possible action.
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for this property on Outpost Trace.
That can, I'll say.
All right, I got a motion from Mayor Protim Weatherly, and the second was from Frank, I believe, right?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, let me see. All of the favor will say aye. All those that would oppose will say nay, and I'll do roll call for the, since we're doing this on video. Dave?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Arch?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Frank?
Aye.
Now vote aye, so passes unanimously. All right. Public hearing and possible action, item number four. The Lagavista City Council is holding a public hearing. Consider ordinance number 20-04-16-01 at ordinance to amend Article 1.000 General and Administrative Fees, Article 3.00 Building Related Fees, and Article 7.000 Zoning and Annexation Fees of Appendix A Fee Schedule of the Lagavista Code of Ordinances. And I will open the public hearing at, what time is it? 6:58 PM. Okay, presentation. All right, I think everybody has seen this numerous times. The fees were discussed and brought, it's been brought to council twice before, March 5th and March 19th. And staff is requesting an update to the fee schedule for the removal of late fees for the library, changes with the two-step PDD process that we discussed in length, some GIS services, inspection fees for construction activity violations, open records request fees, and permit fee increases, road repair fee. Council? No, staffed, I'm sorry, staffed. Is there anything from staff, Josh, that you, or Aaron, anybody needs to?
Mayor, we don't have an update at this time. I will let you know, though, when you get to that point. I did receive comment from Darcy, so I think she would like to speak at the item. If you get to that point, just, you can ask her.
Okay. I'll do that. All right, so staff has nothing else to add, so Dave, any questions? Don, any questions?
Yes. I think this is another one of those slightly contentious issues where we've grouped a lot of things together, and the open records request portion of it is my biggest problem here. I don't feel like we've, as a city, been overwhelmed. I haven't seen the staff overwhelmed with requests. But this leaves a lot of ambiguity where the city could charge an hourly rate for requests for emails and other things that could be used to help hold local government accountable. And I don't see the, the reasoning to increase any of the fees, especially during these strange times, on any of the permits. I think this, this item should be tabled at best, if not dismantled and discussed in many other ways. I, I think the open records request is easily, could be weaponized to discourage citizens from asking questions of their local government, and I like hearing from the citizens, and when they want to make sure we're doing things on the up and up. I don't think there should be a single thing that gets in their way, including what it's gonna cost.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Erin?
I'd just like to provide a point of clarification regarding the open records request fees. I'd just like to provide a point of clarification regarding the open records request fees. The city has always followed the Attorney General's fee schedule with regard to open records request fees. We're not adding new fees. It's not something different. The one place, the Texas Government Code, Section 552.261, allows for the city to adopt specific fees. There are some times when we are asked to perform or asked for certain information that requires manipulation of data. And the fee that we're calling out is the only one that would be different from the Attorney General's prescribed schedule of fees that's in the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 70. And this is simply to recoup the cost that the city is bearing for that time that it's taking to do that. Otherwise, we will follow exactly what the Attorney General's fee schedule requires. And so this is not new. We've always had these fee options, fees in place. We're blessed that we don't have, we're not regularly inundated with open records requests that require, that are of a volume that would require us to charge fees. For example, anything that is a request for copies of existing documents that are less than 50 pages is free. We can't charge labor for that, only for, only for the documents. So this isn't, we're not drastically changing anything. We're simply trying to make sure for those minute areas where there's additional labor being expended, that we have a fee that is in line with what the government code allows to recoup the city cost for that.
I see what you're saying, Erin. I still, I don't see whether any of these fees being changed is going to change the budget for our city in any meaningful way, whether positive or negative. And I think it's just an item that should be off the table right now. To increase a fee of any kind on anybody while we're all on lockdown is, it's ridiculous, pretty much. I think it should be removed from the agenda until till we have a problem. I mean, why are we, why are we trying to even think about taking action on something that's not a problem for our city yet? And if you talk about a $35 an hour city employee fee for digging up emails when we don't have a problem, you know, technically, those city employees are already being paid by the taxpayers. And we are responsible to represent our citizens. So I just, I don't see where we have a problem. And I see it as a little bit of, another little bit of an attack on private citizens' rights. So I think this needs to go away.
Well, I don't, I don't see where, if these already exist and the Attorney General, these fees already exist and we already follow the Attorney General's, and so those fees are already there, how is that an increase? I mean, we already follow this and have the ability to assess these fees. So the fact that we're officially adopting it and putting it in our ordinance, that it's not a monetary increase.
I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, what's the reason to do it? Why are we taking this action?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Erin.
The one place where we are calling out the specific fee is higher than the specified rate that's in the Attorney General's schedule of fees. The government code allows for municipality to charge a fee that's up to 25% higher than the schedule if that fee is justified to cover the cost of the labor associated with that particular action. And that's why we are calling out that particular fee. Otherwise, we follow the schedule exactly as it is, and we're not requesting a change to those fees.
That's great information, Erin, but I'm still asking why? Why ever, why now?
Historically, the fees that are listed by, well, so this process started well before the COVID issue became a thing. And so this was, this has been a long time coming for the first part, as far as timing goes. It just happens that this fell onto this agenda. The second part is the fees that are in the schedule by the Attorney General are based on a statewide number, and they're not individualized to any particular city's costs. And that's why they allow municipalities to set their fees at a higher rate so that you are able to recoup the cost of that particular action.
Okay, we still don't have an answer.
Josh?
I appreciate all that information, Erin, but why are we doing this?
Yes, John. So what kind, can you give us an idea of, you know, how many labor hours and what kind of expense this puts the city through when we're having to retrieve these open record requests and documents and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. So the IT department, when items go over to IT, that's where it generally creates the larger time consumption of our staff. When it comes through the city secretary and they need minutes, they need files, they need documents, then that is typically an operation that is standard practice. Our city secretary can generate these documents. She can pull them from, from the IT in general. What happens is we're getting requests that come in for our IT department in terms of the GIS fees. The GIS fees are the significant time consumption where it creates time to create maps and to create documents that do not already exist. So, for example, Mayor, if someone comes in and they're looking for utility line locations that we do not already have documented, that will require some time. You could have three and four hours' worth of work for our GIS services if the document's not already been created. If the document's an existing document, there's no charge. We pull that document straight from files and we can send it right back out per the ORR. But if the document has not been there and the GIS, which would be Chris Martinez, and on another case, it would be Alexis Smith, would have to spend time to create those documents. And those are not easy functions just to pull out of thin air. So potentially, a couple hours could go up to three or four hours for some request.
Okay, and what about, what about the open records requests that come into the police department?
We get a significant amount of ORRs for the police department, Mayor. Those do not require the time of IT and GIS most often. Those are typically very streamlined in terms of they receive requests. And this happens often. If you think about the monthly report and the number of citations that are issued, a lot of people send open records requests in through the police department, separate of coming through the city secretary. And so that's nothing out of the ordinary. That's, that's something that, as Council Barlow stated, our operations are set up to handle the majority of those requests in a, I would say, a rather quick turnaround. So the documentation may take a couple of hours to make sure we've pulled a lot of that information and getting it back out. But that's not one, as I said, that's related back towards GIS services.
So if I may, when I was researching this, and my understanding as to the why is this is not really, doesn't really have much, if anything, to do with the average citizen that comes in and puts in an open records request. This was more for those development services-type things, the builders and things, the people that come in and request all kinds of information that, you know, that does take our IT and our GIS and our development services and our legal and all these departments that they have to put together for these requests. And they really, again, really don't pertain to the average citizen coming in and saying, hey, I want a copy of emails and communications and stuff like that. Is that not correct?
Mayor, you're spot on on that. If you think about it, it's prospecting and development that, that this focuses on, on the GIS services. If I go back and look at, I know that Clive mentioned the opportunity to request utility information from our departments. One of the responses that we gave to Clive is he can request that information informally through Development Services Department, through Roy. And then with a disclaimer, he can receive that information in an ORR form, but he's not going to receive it through a GIS form. So you're, you're exactly where the intent is. And if you were to, Mayor, if you were to take out this section out of the fee schedule, we would still operate with 75% of the words that are in the fee schedule based on the Attorney General's, whatever the word is, decision. So we would still operate this way. Part of it for us is, in terms of transparency, if it's not in the fee schedule and then someone asks, well, why would you charge me for this? Well, then we go back and say, based on the AG's opinion, this is what we, this is what we do. So for us, I think the transparency's there to say, we're adding it in here. And we've said this already, but we're adding it in so that our individuals that are requesting information are very clear of what the charges could be.
Right. Don, does that help you with the why we're doing this?
Not at all.
It doesn't, may not satisfy why now, but.
It doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. I don't see what we're going to gain. And you can talk about it for 10 hours and give me all your reasoning, but we don't have a need to do this right now. And I think we should be doing business that has an obvious need for the next couple of months, right? So why are we going to make a change? And I have to remind you all, and I know we're all thinking it, we had a couple open records requests recently about projects that were going on and city projects that were going on. And the people that have asked for those open records requests have pretty much been disappointed every time they've asked for them. And if you're asking for, you know, open records from, it's coming from the city manager, the city secretary, and the GIS department, all these are employees of the city, and that is what the staff is there to do. That is our operation. So to be increasing them right after we had a few people requesting them is, it's almost a slap in the face. I think there's just no reason to justify it, especially right now. But altogether, until it's a problem and there's one person abusing it, you don't write yourself in the ability to charge someone hourly rate for technical searches. That's their job, right? So if it's being abused, we don't need to address it. I'm repeating myself.
I mean, I mean, if we get one request every month, no matter what month we decide to take it up, that's following somebody's request. So what do we wait till we don't have any requests for six months before we put it in? It has nothing to do with who requested it, when, you know. This was a problem that was identified months prior. It's just because it's just now making its way onto the agenda for the third time. It's not a timing thing. It's not a slap in the face to anybody. It's just the way the agenda came up. And then this is the way our fee scheduled, you know, just the way it came up on the agenda.
Well, let some other people talk. If you guys are hardcore committed to doing this, then you'll just do it with my complete disgust. We'll leave it at that.
Yes, Dick.
There you go.
The thing is, we're talking about one small part of this whole ordinance. The biggest part of this is to first alleviate fee for the library. And without this, those fees are not going to be alleviated. The biggest part of the changes in the fees are on people that are doing developments and construction and people that are violating our ordinances. Now, we also put the permit fee in there to help improve our streets from the construction that is going on. These were all reasonable things to be doing. Part that's on the open records request, until the request gets excessive, there is no fee. But you've got to realize that every time that you start tying up our legal, our secretary, and our IT, that's taking them away from their everyday job. That's extra work they're having to do, extra hours they're having to put in. There has to be a reasonable fee at the end of that if it gets excessive. And that's basically what this covers. But the PPD stuff, the concept and detail application fees, the GIS services, the inspection fees for construction activity violations, and the permit fees for the road repairs, those are all reasonable things that everybody that does construction and building in this community just has as part of their process. There's no particular big bang on anybody. We're not trying to get at anybody. But I have noticed, and correct me if I'm wrong, there hasn't been much of a decrease in what's going on with our development and building in this community. I'm standing out on my back porch. I'm hearing lots being cleared. I'm hearing saws and hammers and everything around me. So they're still working. And when they come in and they have requests for a PPD, they have these concept and detail requests. They put those applications in, they ask for GIS services. These are all things that cost the city money. And they're all things that there should be a fee for. And the reason we're doing this now is because we've been working on it for months and months, trying to get it settled down and all put together where we can do it.
Mr. Mayor, if there was an actual need, we would take these items one by one and address a need. There's no reason to lump this all together and push all these through without an audience full of people able to participate. Bad timing at a minimum.
Yeah, well, to answer, to follow up on your comment and to answer, or to comment on something Dick said, you can, we do address the fee schedule as a single item. The fee schedule is a single item. Now, the fees that are in there, you can take, you can pull individual items out and have it addressed separately. You can, when you make a motion, you can always make a motion to have certain items pulled from the fee schedule. You're still voting on the fee schedule, but it doesn't necessarily have to contain everything that is being, you know, being considered at this one time. So you can always, you can always amend it. Now, as far as timing, who knows what need shelter in place and these social distancing requirements go, you know, or going to be like in the future? It may be a point that this is the only way we ever have council meetings again. We may not ever be able to have 25, 50 people. We don't know. Because, you know, our leaders that are making these rules, they just keep extending it two weeks and two weeks, and they're talking six months and relapses, and we don't know. So, I mean, yeah, we can put things on hold, but how long do we put them on hold? You know, it's.
Is it necessary right now, Mr. Mayor?
Well, is anything necessary right now? You know, we still, we're still trying to, we're still trying to conduct business as a city and get on with life. But no, I mean, depending on who you are and who you listen to, you could say there's nothing ever necessary or essential. Yes, Arch?
Mayor, thank you. I just want to make this comment that we've gone on and on about that there's a whole lot more to this particular issue than just open records requests. I think that the majority of this.
Yeah, we can hear you, we can hear you, Arch.
We ought to focus on that as opposed to the singular idea of somehow affecting ORRs, which I think is too obvious.
All right, hold on just a second. Well, Arch, we'll have to come back to you. We couldn't hear you. I think Frank, did you have your hand up while ago?
I did, but let me go to Arch. I don't see him on the screen.
Well, I could see him, but his voice is all broken up. It was, we're only hearing like every fifth word, so.
Hey, I can't. Pardon me?
Scroll down.
Okay, let me start over again. Can you hear now?
All right, there we go. We got Arch.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Arch. Nope, we lost you again.
Let me ask you another question if I might, Mayor.
All right, Frank.
It's a point that Dick made. The, where are the road maintenance building permit fees?
Let's see, where's that? That was number six, permit fee increases, road repair.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, without going, changing screens and going to the, to the thing. Let me see. If I can tell you exactly where it's at on the... Yeah, when you look at page... Let's see. Where's it at?
Page 63, according to Darcy.
Can you hear me?
36, page 36.
Yeah, let's see.
It's reflected as a per square foot increase. Draw permit.
Yeah, I was looking at what page...
Oh, the fees are?
Yeah, it's section 3.10, building permit fees.
Page 41 of the packet?
Yeah, 40, yeah.
Right. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at 41. And I'm looking at a list that starts residential. It's a single family, $175 plan review, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I just can't figure out where the increase is shown in the ordinance, like page 41. I don't, I don't see that. I see a list and a fee. And it's a parentheses, and I thought it was going to, it was a earlier packet in which there was a fee schedule showing based on square footage.
Right, that's where it is. I don't know what's in the packet, but...
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
Page 41 shows, Mayor. Page 41 shows the individual list shows single family, $175 plan review fee plus .75 cents per square foot permit fee. If you compare that to the existing fee schedule, you see the increases that are included inside of those fees.
So that's the plus 75 cents per square foot?
Our current ordinance, our current ordinance has 25 cents per square foot. So it's an increase of 50 cents a square foot. Is that accurate?
I got it, thanks.
200% increase?
It's an increase on the square footage, not the actual account.
No. All right, Dave Williams, you got any questions, comments?
No, we've been hashing this out for a while now. I think all the fees just need to be in one document that allows everything to be together. So I don't have a problem with anything that's in there.
Right. Okay, I know, I know Don is asking for at least the open records request to be pulled from this and be considered...
These increased until we see a justification. I want to remind you guys that as a city council, we're supposed to be oversight for the city, right? And the city staff, a couple of them in particular have only lived here for a couple of years. And we're supposed to help them do their jobs more efficiently. And their jobs are all to respond to the citizens' needs. And I just don't see where this is being justifiable. And as a council, I don't know how we could get behind raising a fees. You'd say you want to see them all in one document. That doesn't make, there's no reasoning behind that at all as far as I'm concerned. I can't believe we're still talking about it.
Again, a fee, a fee schedule is, a fee schedule is always, it's a fee schedule. The fee schedule has all the fees and they're all, it's always considered at one time. We don't have 10 different fee schedules or 100 different fee schedules. We have one fee schedule and you consider that, that fee schedule as an amendment. So it's always going to be just one, one document. That's just the way a fee schedule works. You know, the need for the PDD process with the application fees for their concept plans and their detailed plans. You know, that need has been demonstrated by Development Services. Their...
I have received it demonstrated. That need being demonstrated.
We've been having this discussion for months.
We've been having the same discussion for months and it's meaningless.
No, I think it's very justifiable and reasonable. I would disagree.
Which part, Tim, Mr. Mayor?
So, so, so between... So my question, my question would be, since we discarded, started discussing this back months ago, have you spent time with the city manager and discussed, you know, the Development Services and with GIS? You know, have you, have you discussed with anybody this need? Or are you just bringing it to council now because you just, because nobody's mailed it to you, emailed it to you and showed you this? I mean, have you, have you done any research behind all this and, and looked to see whether there was actual need for it or not? Or are you just throwing that out?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, I am.
I've talked to plenty of people and I, I feel like we've got plenty of much bigger problems in the city than, than this particular item that we've spent now probably 35 minutes on. It, it's not timely. I think you should probably, it's probably time enough to listen to the citizens instead of us ranting and raving or, but, I mean, just running around in circles. And I don't have a whole lot else to say.
Hey, Don, we haven't been running around in circles for one. Two, we haven't tried to hurt any citizens from doing open meetings requests. This is not for the normal citizen doing an open meeting request. We already show that it's for more of the commercial type construction where you got 150, 200 page document that's needed from them. That's what this is designed for on the open meetings, not the normal citizen. I don't think Darcy was charged for any of the stuff that she requested. I don't think Ron Smith has ever been charged for any of the stuff that he requested. So it's not, it's not to hurt the ordinary citizens. Ordinary citizens can still do open meetings requests all day long.
Recorded, recorded.
Well, and I, I can also say that...
I'd like to know why David is in favor of this. Which part of it do you think is a need that should be addressed right now?
All the building permit fees, all the the, all the building permits, everything that I have to deal with in planning and zoning and everything that we have to do, deal with, with the building and Standards Commission. You know, those all need to be in one document. So, so commercial people can refer to it.
I don't need to justify my opinion or decisions to your objections.
I'm just wondering why we're doing it.
We are doing it, this is an act of tonight. We've worked on for quite some time and it's here and it's now and needs to be voted on.
Well, and I'll also, you mentioned listening to the citizens. I can tell you, number one, removal of the late fees for the library. That is something that Jan brought forward to us because listening to the people that come to the library and the things that deal, she's gotten feedback from citizens. And so she has determined that removal of these fees is beneficial to the citizens of Laguna Vista. We go down to number four, inspection fees for construction activity violations. Well, I can guarantee you that is citizen driven because we get complaints on a daily, multiple times a day about builders not putting up their, their silt fences and keeping the dirt and pollution, paper, trash, you know, within their sites. And the citizens, I know I get requests almost on a daily of why are, why are we allowing builders to get away with these things if they're violating, you know, our ordinances? And what are you doing about them? So I can tell you, number four is definitely citizen driven. And number six, permit fee increases, road repair fee. Many people, again, almost on a daily basis, maybe not right now, but back, you know, when we were having a more infill going on, got multiple requests. We've got trucks coming down our roads and tearing up our roads. Why are these builders not being forced to pay an extra fee to tear, you know, for the construction trucks coming down the road and tearing them up? So number six, the permit fees for road repair was also definitely citizen driven. Now, the PDD process, that's staff driven. The GIS services is staff driven and the ORR request is staff driven. So it's 50/50 on, on staff and citizens. I mean, it's not just an arbitrary thing that, hey, let's just, let's just raise fees because we want to.
I get it. I know where you're coming from.
All right, so I was on Arch. Arch, did you have anything else to add?
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, if, yes. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I thought I made my point earlier, but apparently you couldn't hear me. Can you hear me now okay?
Yes.
Okay. I was just simply saying that Don, what he was talking about was focused on one single thing, which had to do with the ORRs. Yes, it was. Don't shake it. No. I was listening to everything that you said, not to begin with. I don't know why you think that you have control over this, this meeting. You're the only one that's voiced any opposition to any of the things that we've discussed. The primary focus that I see and the larger part of this whole affair has to do with building permits and things that are, that are in section three of the COVID ordinances and section 14 or, which is, has to do with planning and zoning. Those are the primary things. Those are the things that are going to drive the ship here. And I'm prepared to vote on this and I think you've gone long enough about this.
All right, Dick?
I've said everything I wanted to say.
Okay, Frank?
I agree with Arch. Mayor, this is an issue of sort of parliamentary stuff. I agree with what was said earlier that we ought to move to get to the public hearing part of this and let somebody make a motion so we can vote on it.
Okay. I will point out again, one thing though. Yes, it is a fee schedule and is, and is as heard as one full document. But Don is well within his right to have, to request certain things to be excluded. If somebody wants to, you know, if, and if that's okay, then that would be in that motion that's made, you know. It would be, it would be an amendment to, to the document that were, to the fee schedule. So the motion would be something, you know, I am moved to accept, to adopt the schedule fee with the removal of, you know, such and such. He's well within his right to request that. I don't see where, I, I don't see where Don is trying to control any argument or the, or the agenda item whatsoever. He is just expressing his views as he has the right to as a council member. You know, so whether that motion is made that way or not is irrelevant. But Don definitely has that, that right to, to say everything that he would like to say. So at this point, I know I have one citizen comment. So Darcy, at this time, if you would like to address council?
Hi, Darcy DeVoe, 20223 Travis Drive, Laguna Vista, Texas. Actually, like number one, late fees and library, that's cool, you know. But I didn't understand the two-step PPD. What is that? Because it doesn't really go into what that is, the concept. And, and then, um, open records, I'm done with that. I probably will never do another open records anyway with you people. GSI services, I understand that. The permit increasing for road repairs right now. Doesn't the actual, you guys keep saying it's the builders, but don't the actual people building the house get all those fees? Because you pay your builder, you pay all his fees and it's not like, that doesn't get pushed on to the homeowner. So it's like the guy's bringing his trucks in, he asks, but we've already put the budget out for fixing our roads. I mean, I'm not against fixing these, but didn't those go up triple? I mean, it was 25 and now it's 75? I mean, couldn't that have gone from 25 to 50 a square foot for, you know, the roads? I mean, that just seems like such a huge jump. And personally, right now, at these times, you might not see construction problems happening because those contracts are already had. Those people already had to have that construction loan in the bank to assure that that contractor would even show up. So those are already had. All your jobs that you have right now, those are already in the bank for those contractors. But going forward from now, you have no idea what is about to happen with the economy, none. I was in the 2008 California crash. I saw what happened to everybody out there. I have families that lost millions of dollars. So I am telling you, you wouldn't want to increase all this stuff right now with where we're at. Six months down the line, you're going to see something that people are going, if they can see this and they could say, well, well, when so-and-so put in for theirs, it was only 25 cents. But now I'm paying 75? I mean, go with 50.
So prior to, prior to this, we did not have a road repair fee.
Oh, at all, see?
Right.
I mean, someone said that it was 25 cents a square foot. Someone had...
We lost you.
Are you there? I think Aaron had made the, the thing about how it went from 25 to 75. I thought that was the square footage fee for the permit increase.
Mayor, that's the plan review fee. And so the plan review fee is what's increasing. It's not a road, it's not a road maintenance fee. So you, you increase the plan review fee so that you thus create a road repair basically account. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and of, of that plan review fee, 50 cents is what we...
Are putting to the roads.
What we've put in and, you know, we, we just, we discussed that. we discussed that a few months ago about what what level we thought was appropriate. And that's where the 50 cents came in. Now we're just actually adding it to the schedule.
Right, I I remember that meeting. But didn't we, didn't you guys also, like, before this all came about, I mean, our economy was going up, 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 you know, everything was great. We were all living on happy Sundays. And now I mean, they're talking about no concerts until 2021. They're talking about no outdoor like football games, no arena things until 2021. Do you know what that's going to do to the economy? Do you know that's what it's going to do to people? Do you think they're going to even want to come out here to build at that point?
Well, if they don't.
People are not going to want to build.
Well, if they don't, they won't be tearing up our streets, will they?
Well, I I mean, don't we already have that money put away for the streets right now?
We do have a CIP plan, yes, and and funding for streets, yes.
Okay, but that's all I'm saying. I'm just thinking that this is a bad time for really any of this. And I understand you have to vote on it. I understand that, you know, this started in February when you first did this and then, you know, it went to some other things and this came back. But personally, with what's going on with our society and what's going on in the world right now, I wouldn't be raising anything on anybody at all. You what you guys should be talking about right now is how you're going to help the people in Lago Vista with their water bills and electric bills and how you're going to make sure.
We're talking, Darcy, we're talking the fee schedule right now.
I know. So that's all. That's all I have to say. So thank you. You guys are going to vote how you vote anyway, usually. So I can't.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So that was the one person I had signed up for number four.
Paul Roberts with his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Paul Roberts has his hand up.
Okay. Paul, yes.
Three minute timer.
Okay.
I'm just going to be real brief, gentlemen. I noticed that these fees came out shortly after after my open records request. I would, I'm, that's probably the only section I'm interested in. I didn't come into this tonight to speak on this, but the topic has been a lively one. I recalled seeing the original draft, the the original proposals of these fee requests several months ago. And I don't recall what they were, what the fees were. I see what they are now. I guess my question would just be this, and Aaron, or I need to scroll down, is Aaron, are you still with us? Oh, I see you. Hi. Aaron, my, that first open records request that I submitted to the city some some time ago. Based on these new fees, can you give just a rough approximation of what that would be now? If it were today under this new fee schedule, what my estimated cost would be?
I don't have the your request in front of you.
Do you recall what the original timeframe, like how many hours of work were estimated? Because I had a very big, a very big one.
Pull it up.
And I can understand how, you know, it's like, gee whiz, this is a lot of work, a lot of things to research. We need to, you know, we need to recoup some of our our cost on this. And I'm just curious, what was, do you recall what the time estimate was?
I I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, I don't remember.
I think around $300 at that time. But I was just curious of how it would contrast then versus now. I certainly, I I don't, I think it's fair to say that nobody wants to see a fee schedule that's punitive or disincentivizes people from engaging their local government. I'm assuming you guys have considered all that, and that's why you are here today to vote. So that's all I have to say. Aaron.
Aaron.
Just just as a a point of comparison for you, in the Attorney General's current charge schedule, that's in chapter 70 of the Texas Administrative Code, the charges today that like we're, we want to assess it, I think it's $18.50. Right now, the number is $15. The other number that was 3550, that would that today under the under the AG's schedule is 2850. So it's not a significant change, but it but those numbers do not reflect the costs that the city bears when they have to perform those activities.
Josh, my, if I may just ask you, do you know what the projected revenue increase would be over prior revenue derived from the current fee schedule?
Yes, sir. Couldn't forecast what we've got, even if we went back three years, mayor, wouldn't be able to to look at those requests and see what they are. So don't have a revenue projection at this point.
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Well, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:47 PM. And now we move to council discussion and possible decision. Dave, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the the fee schedule as it is and move on.
Second, a second.
All right, I have I have a motion from Dave Williams and a second from Frank because he beat you again, Arch. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, if you do, raise your hand so I don't have to go down the list. And I'm not seeing any hands. All right, so I'll go down the list. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, nay. Dave Williams.
Aye.
Don Barthlow.
Nay.
Arch Davila.
Aye.
Tim Collins.
Aye.
Dick Weatherly.
Aye.
Frank Robbins.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Fee the fee schedule is adopted six to one. All right, let me see. All right, let's see. Number five. The Lago Vista City Council held a public hearing, consider an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district of approximately 5.902 acres of land in the WB Corwin Survey number 189, Travis County, Texas, from TR1, temporarily restricted to PDD Planned Development District. Herein referred to as the Lake Shore Boulevard PDD and providing for related matters. And I will open the public hearing at 7:49 PM. And let's see, number five. So number five is the condos at the end of Lake Shore Boulevard. We are now in step three of this process. First step was the development agreement, as you may recall, and then step two was their request to be annexed. The PDD, the development agreement in step one outlined their agreement, their desire to build these condos according to our our standards. And then it, once they once we they sought annexation and they would seek the PDD with the development agreement already in place that they were going to build their condos in accordance with our PDD. I believe it was C4 standards. Is that where we started, Roy?
I'm sorry.
Oh. When they, the development agreement, was that based on C4 and then going to a PDD?
It's not C4. It's it's commercial. CR.
CR, okay. I knew it was one of them that they were building, that the agreement covered. I just couldn't remember. So now you now you, they're coming to you. We've we've done the development agreement. We've done the annexation. Of course, when it's when any property is annexed, it is annexed in under a temporary zoning, which is the TR1, and then they have to come back, the owner has to come back at a separate time and request an official zoning be given. They're requesting the a PDD. Your packet here has a some early design documents that, you know, are not necessarily up to date right now, but they are not included in the draft ordinance for the PDD. However, these design documents do help demonstrate the effort, the care sensitivity that the builders have put in during the various stages of this effort so they could maximize their the compatibility of the development. All the various site plans that are included utilizes including the one that utilizes the superimposed aerial photograph demonstrate the successful effort to preserve the mass majority of the existing protected protected trees. And the site plan allows you to identify the precise location of the condominium dwelling units and see the orientation of each floor pan to the surrounding property. So although the design documents might be not 100% up to date right now, you can tell exactly what it's going to look like for the most part just by what is in in your packet. Our impact today, if this is approved, the property owner would proceed to submit an application for a site development plan and minor plat approval prior to an application for the required building permits to cover the initial construction phases. Preliminary reviews of design by both the applicable city of Lago Vista departments and the Travis County ESD1 and have been ongoing well in advance of the development agreement, annexation petition and zoning application. So this has been a some a work in progress for quite some time now. If we choose to deny it at this time, the property owners would according to our development agreement would be looking to be disannexed. So that is where we are at. We have Steffi with us, but before I go to Steffi, is there anybody from staff that has any comments to add? No, okay, so at this time, I'm going to go to Steffi. Is it Motal?
Motal. You kind of have to use this drawl on it.
Steffi Motal, and she has a presentation that she will be adding, correct, that you'll be presenting down at the bottom of the screen here?
Yes, sir.
All right, it is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members for allowing me to present this evening. That that summary of the project was almost my entire presentation, so thank you for that. It's clear that you've already given this quite a bit of thought in the earlier phases. I do realize this is the third one. However, I wanted to go over just quickly with you some of our design intentions. So I work with Black River Noi Architects, who's owned by Sinclair Black. He's also the president of the entity that owns this project. So this is an architect driven development from the ground up. And Sinclair's philosophy, which is the firm's philosophy, is rooted in sense of place and creating wonderful places for people to to be. He's an urban designer, which means he thinks a lot about community, not just architecture. The spaces between buildings are equally important to the buildings themselves. So that that reason, that that thinking about saving existing trees is not an afterthought. It's an intention from the beginning of the design concept. You can see here in this rendering from the lake view, the condo buildings are actually smaller footprints broken into four separate footprints that are connected. But this allows there to be spaces between the buildings for trailheads and things to start cascading steps down to the land, things of that nature. It also, you know, helps with the size of the building. They make some smaller buildings. So here is the phased plan, which I believe is in your packet. And this is just showing you that here near the end of Lake Shore Boulevard, the entrance into the site. This is the high end and the water is here. That we have eight cabana units, cottages, small footprints, a central pool and fire lane loop. Across from those are more single family height buildings. These would be one and two story. These are similar in scale. They're paired townhomes for a total of 10 units. And they frame this central tree field common area between them, also trailheads starting in that area. And then the four condo footprints that I mentioned before, for a total of 46 condo units. It's essentially three units per floor in each of these footprints. We did reserve the ground floor of this building B. You'll see it has two fewer units. That's because most of the ground floor of this unit is an amenity space that's important to the community. It links the central pool, which is designed around family enjoyment towards the hillside pool, which is more of a retreat quiet type pool. So here is again, all of these trees that are highlighted here are existing trees that we are designing around, intending to preserve. And that is all for my presentation this evening, and I welcome any questions you might have.
All right, so we'll, I'll just go down the list. Dave?
Yes. This is this is about the fourth or fifth time I've seen this presentation. We just went through this in planning and zoning. They vented it out extremely well at our last planning and zoning meeting. I think this will be a great addition to our community. It is important to understand that they could build this right now without any authorization from the city because they're outside the city limits. But they they spent the time and the effort to make sure that they get it according to our specs, and I I commend them for that. And I think it's important that it would be a nice addition to our community. The layouts of the plans are well thought out. They spaced it out nicely. They had a lot of engineers and people working on this for three years now. So it's been a long process, and I think it would be a good addition to our community. That's all I have to say.
Dave, that was true, but we did annex them, so they are now in the city limits.
Yes.
If we don't approve this, then they'll disannex and then they'll build it on their own any, but yeah.
Correct.
Don? Did we lose Don? All right, we'll go to Arch.
Just in, just as an overview, I believe that this is a well thought out plan. I'm very impressed with everything that's been presented to this point, and I look forward to seeing that building occur.
Tim?
I have no objection. This is one of the cleaner presentations we've had in some time.
All right, Dick Weatherly.
No, just two things. One, Steffi, can we hire you to tell the other developers how to get this done? Because this has been presented extremely well, and I've been very happy with the way that we've gotten information and what you've shown us makes decisions a whole lot easier. And then the second one, Mr. Mayor, it says we're having a hearing and consideration of an ordinance, but there's no number or anything for the ordinance. Is that something we would do later, or is that what this is about? She has a number to assign to it. If you adopt it, she'll put the number on it.
I'd say normally, a lot of times we assign it afterwards.
Okay, but there there is a number. We just, we need to make a motion to approve the ordinance or adopt the ordinance. Yes, sir. Actually, she has the number on the ordinance and it and, you know, when you, when I put it on the agenda.
you, when I put it on the agenda that way, where I use the Xs, y'all laugh at me, so I quit doing that.
Let's see, where's the actual ordinance? I was gonna say, na na na.
It's 201592-
Well, that's not the ordinance number.
It's not, that's the application.
Yeah. It's roughly on page 100 or so in your packet. It's, it's 20-04-16-02, Sandra? 02, the, the, I would have had an X, I would have had an OX, not knowing where it was gonna go, but I think she determined it was gonna be 02.
Yeah, and that's the one that came out Monday.
All right, is that it, Dick?
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Frank?
Steffi, I've been reviewing PDs and other development for Lago for about 13 years. This is one of the best, very really neat feasibility issues that y'all have worked through. I think the way you're planning on building it's gonna work. Hope you make a lot of money. I echo what the other council members have said about great job. Hopefully you can work with some of the other folks here. We've used the term model before for your development agreement and so forth, so we appreciate you.
Josh? By chance, have you reached out to Councilman Bartholomew to see where he is at?
Just send the text now, Mayor.
All right, so at public hearing, I have Mr. Ron Smith signed up to speak on this one. So Ron, at this time, you have the floor.
Actually, I'm gonna pass.
All right, so I've got some hands waving. Darcy was first. Go ahead, Darcy.
Hi, hi Steffi. I just had a couple of questions about your plans. So first, how many occupants does this condo hold? What is your occupancy level?
Are you asking by fire code standards what the occupancy would be?
Yeah, I, I guess, like if, are these all one bedrooms, or they, because it says one-bedroom community at the top of, of page 63, I think it was. Are these, are these more than one bedroom, or are they multi?
We have a, a large mixture of unit types in addition to the mixture of building types. So the cottages were all one-bedroom, very small buildings. The townhomes will be more like a traditional single-family home. They'll be three and four bedrooms. And then within the condo buildings, we have a roughly even mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom.
Okay. And so what, what is the total occupancy, though, once all these units are in? I mean, you know, like, is it 280 more people? Is it 360 more people? Is it, is it what? I mean, that's what I'm wondering, you know? Because you're saying you have three, four, two. Well, that can make, you know, five people in one family. And I, I'm just wondering the in and out of there, because I think we had this discussion one time before on plans, that for a fire standard, that you only have one way in, one way out. And, and on one, on the loop of the building, you have two roads going out, and it looks like into just a field on the backside. Why couldn't you make that a continuous road and make it be able to loop around? So if you ever did have a fire down at that low level of the lake, because the only where, where for you guys to go is lakeside, you could loop around and you'd be able to get more people out.
Well, we're on a cul-de-sac, so, you know, we only have one access point naturally. We do have a loop, a fire loop within the project, closest to the largest buildings. There's 64 total units at this time, so, you know, if you took the average of maybe three people, that would, that would be almost 200 people. We are doing a traffic impact analysis, as, that's included in this PDD as a requirement for us to do. So we haven't done that yet to be able to answer your question specifically about transportation. But that, that's a guess at to how many people there might be, based on 64 units.
And, and, and your buildings, will people be able to have short-term rentals in those? Or are they all gonna be owner occupied or rented out as, you know, rent?
We do not have that determined yet. The, the condo documents or the HOA documents haven't been crafted. I'm guessing that the small cottages will very likely allow short-term rentals. It is a possibility.
Okay. And do you know what these will sell for? What's their sales price? So I'm, I'm determining what the tax dollars is, is that we're, a lot of this is getting off you right now, when this gets built?
Right. Well, I think, as you pointed out earlier, this is, this is a greatly unknown time for many of us right now. What we might have guessed were the sales prices a month ago have, have been drawn into question, certainly. It, and because there's such a unit mix, like I said, some of them are one-bedroom and some of them are up to four.
Right.
It's really hard to guess.
And do you have like a beginning date and an end date, once you start? Like how long what the project will last? What's the determination of that? Like how long? Is this a five-year project, or is this?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't answer that.
Okay, okay.
I'm a little bit, I don't have all those.
Okay. I was, I was just wondering, you know, because they're talking about the roads and fixing the roads, and I'm looking at where that's going into, and if it's, you know, stacking up with, you know, they've got 2021 for this road that they're fixing, but now you guys are working, dragging stuff down that road until 2025, you know, they're gonna have to go back to their things and readjust their roads, because why would you fix a road when there's a huge, you know, buildings going in here, you know? So that's, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and, and Darcy, this is a, it is gonna be a phased-in project, so that all, all the buildings will not be built at one time. There's three different phases, so we may not have an actual timeframe. It just depends, you know, how long it takes them to build out phase one, and what their, you know, occupancy level is before they decide to move on to phase two. And, you know, so it's harder to-
Oops, sorry.
Also on the streets, this is over on the east side of Lago Vista, brand-new subdivision streets built in there, and hopefully we're not having to repair those anytime soon.
Well, and, and what about the, is there neighbors over there? I mean, they're not, they're saying yay, okay, that, that this goes on for so long in their streets, or has anyone, has any citizens said anything about this, or has they been told yet, or?
Say we advertised, and we have not received those comments, just like every other process that we go through?
Okay, okay.
Yep.
That's it. Thanks.
All right, Paul, I think I saw your hand up as well.
Gosh, well, Darcy, the reporter, she's got that reporter voice. Does anybody else kind of pick that up? Is it just me? No? I hear it. All great questions from Darcy. I was gonna ask just if, if you guys were going to incorporate into your bylaw, your HOA, if y'all were going to allow short-term rentals. It sounds like you're inclined to do so. And I was gonna ask about opposition from surrounding property owners. I understand Josh said that there hasn't been none. What happens to your project? Have you guys reached, are you guys going to have water access?
Steffi?
Yes, sorry, it took me a second to unmute my microphone. Water access as in the utility or as in the lake?
As to the lake. Will you, will the property have access to the lake?
There are three acres of land that surround us, between us and the lake, and we do have an easement over that property that allows hiking trails, a day dock, and access to the water.
And have you guys, have you guys reached an amicable, amicable agreement with Jim Otwell and Kyle Borrow to that effect yet?
I am unaware of the status of that. I know that the copy of the easement was provided.
Good. So I guess my, my only question is really, if you guys don't get an agreement to use any of the property that they own, how would that, would that, how would that affect, would your project stop, or would it go forward? Mike, I just don't want to see a, a project, a developer come out, start something, and then something unanticipated happens, and then we end up with a derelict project. So to rephrase, if you guys cannot reach agreement with them on anything, does your project move forward?
I would say yes, and I have complete confidence that we will reach an agreement. Obviously, that easement was carefully reviewed before this property was purchased to understand what the rights would be. And I don't think we would have purchased the property if we weren't confident that those trails and access to the water would have been allowed.
Didn't you guys get your tram tagged and have to move it?
We did, yes.
So if you don't reach an agreement, you feel confident that the project can still move forward, correct?
I do.
That would be fantastic. Awesome. It looks great. I wish we'd had more developers out here like you guys.
Thank you.
So I, I would like a little clarification on that. Paul, what kind of water access are you talking about? Because it looks like they can just walk down from the building and jump in the lake.
You know, I mean, just be real frank with you. I mean, you know, I'm friends with Jim and Kyle. All I know is that they own all the acreage underneath the water around that property, and the tram was trespassing, and it got tagged by the LCRA, and there is ongoing, last I understood, there was ongoing discussion as to, between them, between those parties. That's all I know.
Okay, so you're talking about some kind of mechanical device, or a dock, or something like that, that would be?
I don't know what, that's why I was asking, what is their access to the water? What is their intentions? Is that they have a tram, so I presume, she said that they would have a day dock, so a tram would presumably go to that day dock. Right now, the tram is trespassing on someone else's property, and they don't have rights to that, is my understanding. And I don't want to see, I would love to see their project go forward. So I'm just asking, is there, if they don't reach agreement with those guys, can they still go forward without the lake access?
Hey Mayor, and one, one thing I would like to caution this, and Aaron can chime in, is if there's a discussion going on between the developer and a different property owner, I would encourage council not to continue this discussion during the meeting. If it's something that Paul's aware of, in terms of the application, this is not something that we're privy to, and legally, I just don't think that, well, I don't think we should have Steffi answering questions like this. If Paul's aware of something that the rest of us aren't, it's not our business. I understand the point, potentially, that's being asked.
It's just hearsay, Josh.
And that's the point. I don't think we should put Steffi on the point to answer a question that personally I feel is going into a legal area.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, where's my, what's up my agenda, sorry? Where did I put my Timeout. I gotta find my agenda. Lost it in my stack. I know I'm on number five. There it is. All right. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead, and we've had presentation, council discussion, public discussion, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:16 PM. And now we're on to council discussion and possible decision. So I'll check down my list. Dave, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Do I need to make a motion?
Well, let's see if, I'm gonna, hold on, let me-
I think you wanna go through the whole list first.
Yeah, let me check with everybody else real quick before we, you made the motion last time before I got through my list, and-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Don Bartholomew, is he back?
Mayor, I didn't receive a, I didn't receive a comment back from the two texts that I
All right, okay. Okay. So Arch? No. Tim, do you have anything?
Nothing to add.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Dick Weatherly?
Nope, I'm good.
Frank?
Nope, but since I'm on the list, can I make the motion?
Yeah, you're, you're last. You, you can, go ahead.
Yeah, I get to do, move that we approve ordinance 20-04-16-02.
I don't know, I saw like three hands go up, and-
I think that was Tim, Mayor. He was pretty fast.
Tim? All right, I have a motion and a second by Tim, Sandra, by Tim. Any further discussion? All right, so go down the list. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Dave?
Aye.
On, Don's not here. Arch? I saw an aye come out of his mouth there. Couldn't hear him, but I saw it. Tim Collins?
Aye.
Dick Weatherly?
Aye.
Frank, Frank Robbins?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Aaron, I got a question real quick.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So I have Don leaving the meeting at such-and-such time, 7:56 PM, is when it shows he, so do I, is it just a 6-0 vote, or do I go 6-0 with one absentia, or do I just count him as not part of the meeting anymore? Because I don't believe he's coming back.
He's part of the meeting as of the time that he disconnected, and his vote was not something that's required for this particular action, so you don't, it would be a unanimous vote.
Okay, unanimous vote. All right. Steffi, thank you. And Steffi will probably leave everybody, so y'all can wave by. I don't think she wants to listen for the next four hours, so.
Good evening.
Thank you. Sandra, I've got on my computer that it showed Councilman Bartholomew left the meeting at 7:56 PM. Just note that in our meetings. So in case he comes back, or I don't, I don't know if he's coming back or not, but just note that he left at 7:56. All right, and we will move on. Let's see. Actually, I want to, I want to get the long, longer ones out of the way, so I'd like to skip down to number 13. Is everybody okay with that?
Mr. Mayor, did we not need to approve the rezoning? Or is that what we just did?
That's what you just did.
That's what we just did.
Two things here that were in the packet, so that-
Oh, what, one was a, one was an exhibit from earlier.
Okay.
I believe. Yeah, you look at, so you had, yeah, I think, so we have our staff report, and then just below it is the one that was given to planning and zoning. So if you'll look, it'll, you'll see that it says two planning and zoning and have 4/9 on it. Is that what you're looking at?
Okay, yes, that was what I was looking at.
Okay.
So that one action we need.
Yes, Frank.
This may be a good point. The ordinance that I made, made the motion on is the one that went out Monday.
Yeah, it's this little light's on.
Fix that Roy put in and that the applicant agreed with.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to go ahead and jump down to number thirteen. This is a discussion under action items, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding annexation and development agreement with K S W holding L P bar and in Travis County, Texas, known as Nature's Point, located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city and to authorize the city manager to take actions accordingly. There, let me get number thirteen. Um, so you know, as y'all know, this is, uh, the wedding venue, Nature's Point Wedding Venue and Surrounding Properties. Uh, Walters has had this property for several years now and has been working to, um, you know, to get this wedding venue redone, reopened, uh, some other amenities. He's done lots of work out there. Um, but at this time, they have requested a development agreement, annexation and a three eighty economic development agreement, uh, for the property referred to as Nature's Point. They pro, the project involves K S W developing a new private drive on the property from Lake Shore Boulevard to the end of the peninsula, uh, granting the city a thirty foot, um, City of Lago Vista exclusive utility easement and a ten foot public utility, uh, non-exclusive, uh, and drainage issue. Uh, K S W would, will install water, wastewater lines to the property and deed them to the city. Uh, the city will go, will complete the gap in the line to get service to the edge of the property. Uh, the current draft of the three eighty economic development agreement is for twenty years and provides for the refund of one hundred percent ad valorem, velorem tax revenue increases of the projects, assess taxable value over and above the year ad valorem tax baseline is established and then for eight years. Um, so on the three eighty agreement, uh, it is a twenty year agreement. That will begin whenever we assess, um, the ad valorem tax baseline year. Um, don't know right now what year that'll be, uh, but it'll go into effect at that time. And then, um, once that is, um, once it goes into effect, then the three eighty agreement goes into effect for eight years and the, um, the, what they get, what they get refunded is a hundred percent of the increase in value, um, for eight years. Um, I was, I've been doing a little bit of math on this, on the agreement. Um, from what I can see, um, we were looking at about, um, this, this is, this is guesses. This was just kind of estimate. This was no exact numbers or anything like that. Um, but the cost to the city was somewhere in the range of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Over that eight year period. However, right now we are not getting anything from the property. So it's not really a loss. It's just money that we would not receive. But once, once the other, once that eight years is up in the remaining, you know, just the remaining twelve, just under the twenty years, it doesn't go beyond twenty years at this point, but you know, just in that remaining twelve, the city would make approximately two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So we would, um, get back what, what, um, what we didn't earn in the first eight years plus a little. And then we have to figure in the, uh, sales tax and things like that and, um, the money generated through sales tax and, and, um, other things that are associated with the business. Um, we were, over this twenty year period, this three eighty agreement, uh, I think I figured out would, just on a guess, would be about a two and a half to one ratio, um, of what we gain by bringing this property into the, to the city as opposed to what this three eighty agreement would cost us. Uh, so those are just some numbers that, again, I don't have exact numbers, but that's, that's when you do the three eighty agreements, you know, you always look at, uh, what do you get in return for what you're giving up and, you always try for as high a factor as you can. And I think right, I think I was guessing around two and a half to one on the three eighty agreement. Um, and that's all I have at the moment. So, uh, staff, do you have any, um, comments that you would like to add at this point or Aaron?
If you don't mind, uh, just looking at that and clarifying some of the numbers you've talked about. Uh, we've had the discussion as council, uh, asking with staff about how the investment would work out. You know, initially we were looking at, when this came up a few years ago with a different owner, the request was for the city to install lines and then the, uh, went back and forth with that owner of the property and said, well, what if they install the lines? So when Mr. Walters came onboard, our dialogue started out with the idea of, of how can we extend water and wastewater to this property and then have it annexed into the city. Uh, we discussed with Mr. Walters and said, we prefer you to install these lines that makes sense for us. And then we would come downstream, make sure we can bring water and wastewater to the, uh, address, to the property line, basically coming back. And based on those numbers that you were talking about, Mayor, uh, one of the things that Mr. Walters has showed us is that maybe they're going to invest, uh, three to five to six million in building out this property. So there's a, there's a good range on what the final build out could entail in terms of cost. Uh, then we go back to what T C A D values the property at. And if T C A D values it at three million and they end up paying nineteen to twenty thousand a year in city taxes, that comes to that lower end of what you were talking, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over an eight years. If the investment goes up to the five million, then you look at roughly thirty thousand a year in those city taxes and that would go up to two sixty. One of the challenges that, that the owner and the developer is going to have to have is what it's going to cost to install these lines. And so the, the desire to find a revenue stream that will satisfy the investment that they're going to be turning back over to the city is you pick the property tax because that's something that you, you pretty much can't control in the ad valorem. The sales tax, the occupancy tax, the hotel tax, however you look at it, those fluctuate differently based on how the market is going to go and how our country responds to different indicators. So, uh, the dollars we've discussed with previous council and with this council, uh, basically lay it out so that in that eight year period, the owner, property owner knows what to expect. And then the city knows what to expect in terms of the, the property given back to us. So that just goes to clarify some of the numbers that you've already discussed, Mayor. And then there's those ancillary items that are harder to predict for that total economic impact. And that's something that our Economic Development Committee, along with our director have looked at to talk about how that could potentially expand and, and be a, have a positive impact on the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ray, do they have any kind of estimate on what it's going to cost to run the water and sewer lines from where they can connect with us to their, uh, construction?
Mayor, originally the number we were looking at was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, Laura is on the, on here today and she's, uh, representing Keith's team. But what I'm saying is with the estimate of a hundred and fifty thousand, we've seen this on all of our projects. That one fifty was what we started at in about December of, of seventeen, when we started looking at some of these numbers. Once they go out to bid, my thoughts and my concerns are for both lines, that's going to be a lower number. And I know that's something that they've talked about. Uh, Keith is a, is a dollars and cents kind of guy and we've bounced these conversations back and forth. And so if Laura chimes in with a different number, but I, I tell you, without the bid out there now and without the go ahead, they're not going to know until they get those hard costs coming in.
All right, Dave, you have anything?
Mic is off.
Laura, I keep, I keep losing connection.
Okay. Arch? Now you're agreeing. All right. We can't hear Arch. All right. So I'm going to go to Tim then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Every time I turn the camera on, I lose connection. So that's why I don't have the camera on. I don't know why that is, but.
Okay. I don't know. Maybe at some point we can get I T with you, figure that out, but not tonight.
Yeah.
All right, Tim, did you have anything?
No, I don't have any further input. It's complicated.
Mr. Weatherly, Dick Weatherly?
Um, I have been talking and dealing with Mr. Walters since the beginning of this whole thing back in seventeen. I think he's looking at bringing something to the community that's going to be very valuable to us. I think it's going to generate a lot of jobs. I think it's going to generate a lot of sales tax revenue. And I think that we need to, uh, approve the three eighty agreement with him. Uh, I know that we had some concerns with, uh, Aaron on some of the, uh, road issues and some of the easement things. So, uh, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, but um, I think this is something that we need to look at favorably.
Frank?
Uh, I don't know if every, if y'all have read Josh's response to my questions and issues of the thirteenth, but I agree with Dick. It's, and my questions and, and the responses I got from Josh indicate there are some major problems with the development agreement in its current form. Those are legalese issues, there are technical issues that are wrong. There, the document is incomplete. There are substantive issues that are bad, wrong with the development. We will look at any development, any use. So comparing that with the last model, uh, development agreement, we had approval of that zoning. Uh, plus we don't have a site plan. We don't know literally given the document what we're approving. I had suggested at the last meeting that, uh, a group I could get together with the manager and your staff and sort through some of that stuff instead of doing it at council meeting. And, and that might be possible. I think that the timeframe, that year timeframe and a hundred percent tax base is too long. Largely from what I understand, and I, I need to get some additional information, that given Josh's estimate of five million dollars, that's, uh, a total of around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the eight years. But what we've heard tonight that the water and wastewater line may be only a hundred and fifty. So somewhere in that, we might be able to come and hear, I don't see it in the document that we have tonight. Initially, the mayor has pointed out potentially, and, yeah. He may read the document more closely or better than I do, but I don't, I don't see some of that that the mayor described to us earlier in the document. So finally I hope we could sit down, some of us could sit down with, with Josh and his staff and then visit and try to see if there's a consensus. And then have the staff or whoever visit with Walters and see what we can work out and do what Dick suggested and agree with Dick's point, uh, get this deal done. It's just not in a form yet that I, that I'm comfortable at all with.
All right. So I'm, Arch is disconnected and come back. I'm going to see Arch, did you have anything? And then, and then I'm going to give Laura a chance to, to speak. And where'd he go? There he is.
He's got his mic off.
Okay. Well, we're still having problems with Arch at the, at the moment. So Laura, at this time, if you would like to address counsel?
Hey, Laura's going to text, uh, type some stuff in here. So I'm just going to relay it in as it comes through. Okay, Mayor?
Okay.
Josh, if you don't mind for a minute, if you could send the phone connection info out on the chat line there. If they can't, if they can't listen here, they can get on their phone and be able to participate with audio anyway.
Yep, sir. I'm sending it now.
Thank you. I'm okay. I just.
Mayor, Laura just let us know that they've submitted a survey and a site plan with elevations of the project. And if, if that's part of the questions that we have, then that's clarified because we should have those in the office.
Well, I, Mayor or Josh, I hopefully we could see that at some future date. Among other things that we would actually have in the packet, a complete document, for instance.
Mayor, I agree with Council Robbins. Our goal for this meeting was to present the information to the council and to be able to, um, have council make comments back to staff and to Laura so that we know where council's at and then to present this information at the following agenda for that consideration. I feel confident that we've gathered a lot of the information that we need. There, there may be some changes to the documents that, that we need, but by the, um, May seventh meeting, which looks like the next council meeting, I, I feel pretty good that we're going to have everything we need to have. And that's just the, the benefit of having Laura on this meeting with council is to hear your comments back. So, um, I think that's helpful, Council Robbins.
Yes, Frank.
Mayor, question for Josh. Josh, you, you, in your response in your email, it appears that you agreed or you had, or you said, okay. It appears that you agree that, for instance, that section that I was referencing needed to be fixed. Is that correct?
Mayor, uh, no. So in the twenty-five questions that received, if there was a statement and no question, I simply typed the word okay to say there was no question, but I have acknowledged that you typed it. So, that doesn't mean that I, that I'm saying I agree with you or not agreeing with you. There may be issues in a particular section, but no, that wasn't where it was at. So.
All right. Well, and I, you know, one of the things I want to see before.
Let me, how, I don't think, I don't think. You guys don't want to go through this page by page, right? So I guess I'll sit down with Josh and do, or the next council meeting when it's on our agenda. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I don't want to go through it page by page tonight. Cause I know one of the things that, that, that I have concerns with is, you know, the driveway uh, goes through, uh, some other properties. And I think this whole development depends on what happens between, um, K S W and those four property owners on either side of that driveway. And I don't want to, I don't want to proceed on our behalf if every, if everything's not, if all the property owners on that driveway are not in agreement, uh, cause that. if all the property owners on that driveway are not in agreement, because that would, that would drastically change the way things are done. So, you know, I would like to see everything at that, on that end, the KSW and the, and all the properties and whatever, whatever agreement that they come up with, I would like to see that in place before, you know, we proceed on our end. Because that, that's a, that's a big part of it.
Mayor, and Laura added the comment.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
That they've met with the four neighbors and the property owners. They, she said they're in agreement for how to manage the road improvements, easements, and friendly access of the road for the business purpose. They are drafting the development agreement that they expect to have signed. The neighbors wanted us to get this agreement resolved. So what we're saying is the same thing you're saying, Mayor. We, as a city, need to have that document to show that something's gonna happen as we're moving forward. And Laura's aware of that, and that's what their team is working on.
Yeah, well.
We can't expect council to make an action without having that agreement in place.
Yeah. Yeah. In writing, too.
Legally, Mayor, we can't, we can't annex that road without the property owner's request.
Aaron, did you have anything to add to the conversation?
Mute. Trying to. Okay. Based on the scope of the discussion among the council members and the, what I foresee is the game plan to have a sit-down discussion, go through the concerns that Councilmember Robbins has expressed, which will necessitate some tweaks to the documents. And we can get finalized information for, for the neighbors' properties, that agreement, plus get you final plans, site plans. My apologies, we, we got some documents yesterday, I believe, but it was not within the seventy-two hour timeframe, so I was hesitant to update, to add stuff to the packet since it wouldn't have met the statutory required timeframes for notice. So we will have that, all of that information prepared for you for the next agenda. And we'll have an opportunity to talk with Laura and get any final details or concerns that you have. My request would be to please express whether, whether this evening on, on the meeting or in discussions, if you have something else that you feel we need to address in the documents. So we can have it in the best possible shape for you at the next council meeting.
Yeah, and what, just on a side note, we got it, it's a good time because of the way the month and the meetings fall. We have a three-week break between meetings this time instead of just two, so. We've got time, but time to work on this, get, you know, Frank can get in with Roy and, and we can get everybody all together and, or not everybody all together, but we can get people together with staff and get, get these things worked out in the three-week period. Does anybody else have anything that we need to bring the staff's attention so that they can be, work on this?
Mayor, do you want to sit, have two or three of us sit down with Josh when we go through this? Or you just want to do it one-on-one?
I don't know, I don't know that we need to have a committee of any sort. You know, I think, I, I think, I think one or two people is just fine. I mean, each, each one, each, if we, if we, if we have more than a couple that have some major changes, comments that they need to make, they can get with Josh and then, you know, we can kind of compile them. But I don't think we need to have a meeting with three or four at, at one time.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a problem in working with Frank on, on this particular subject. Because it's definitely have to come before planning and zoning at some time, so I'd rather have a heads up before it gets there.
Well, now, now Arch, Arch and I've already had the conversation, so we can have more than three of us get together or visit about this before the next meeting. So for me, it's me and Arch and now Dave, right? In other words.
Yeah, if I need to back out, then I'll back out.
That's not a committee, we're just gonna talk.
Well, I don't.
Mayor, what I was gonna say is we can get together, we're gonna be getting together next week with Laura as our team. And if, if we want to add in Frank for his comments, if we want to add in Counselor Williams as well, fantastic. We're gonna get together just like this and look through the document on this same type of screen. So if it's up to you, Mayor, we're gonna be getting together anyway with Laura. You tell us what you want us to add and we'll make it happen.
Well, that, no, that's fine. I, I just, I don't know, I just was picturing in my mind, old school, subcommittee, sitting down in the conference room and hashing things out, and I was just thinking that was not going to be efficient in, at this time. So, but if it's, you know, it's gonna be done go-to-meeting and, and three people, no more than three, want to sit in and express their concerns, yeah, I'm good with that.
Mr. Mayor, if more than three wanted to do this, you could easily call it special meeting. You know, the four of them could be active and the remainder silent.
Well, yeah, we'd have, we'd have to have a council meeting, call a work session and, but I, I, I don't know that this is something that, you know, this is something that should be worked out by the developer with staff, you know, council and members can present their concerns. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to start something where council members are getting with developers and, and hashing out, you know, developments.
Mayor, I was gonna back away. What Aaron was saying, sorry.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I need to back out, I can back out. You know, that's not a problem. Arch and, Arch and Frank can meet with him and I'll just give my concerns to Josh and move on.
Yeah, well, you know, what I want to make sure is, you know, that council works with staff, whether it's Frank and Arch or, you know, I, I want, I want council to be able to give direction to, to staff about what we're looking for in, in developments and PDDs and stuff like that. But I don't necessarily want council getting together with, with the developer and going, hey, I want you to put this in there. Oh, you gotta do that. You've gotta do that before, you know, that's up to the developer to come up with.
I agree.
You know, so.
I'm, I'm fine. I'll back out. I'm back out.
But, yeah, Josh, if, if two, even three, even if, if, if Dave wants to go in, you know, I just want to make sure we're not dictating, those three that are in on this council are not dictating to the developer what they, what they have to do, you know. Council should be telling staff, staff, you and Roy and Aaron, you know.
Yeah, it's Mayor, we'll, we'll handle it that way. We'll circle, we'll circle together on our team first. And then we can, as Aaron was saying, we just need to make sure that we have the comments from council of areas that you want addressed, because we don't like to present a document that still has questions. So we have some questions and comments from Counselor Robbins. If anyone else has any questions, let us know. We'll pull together internal, our group with a couple of council members. Then we'll take our comments back to Laura, and like I said, I'm pretty confident we're gonna be able to work through and, and get the document ready for both something that KSW and the city is happy with.
Okay. Frank, did you have a comment? I saw your hand go up.
No.
Okay. So if there's not anything else, I think we're clear on direction, right? We can go back to agenda item numbers. Oh. Let's see. Ron, did I, did I call on you already? I know you had, I'm sorry, I had some citizens that, I know Ron signed up.
Actually, yeah. First of all, as a citizen looking at the packet, it says discussion and possible action. And as soon as I see the word possible action, I said, oh my God, they're gonna vote for it. And, and so I got three points I'd like to make. Number one, I, I see a lot of missing exhibits on here. In fact, I went, now I looked at the appraisal district, and I noticed that Keith Walters has ten properties inside our zip code. And this one's only dealing with Nature's Point. But that's not clear in the legal documents and development agreement and all the recitals. In fact, I didn't even pick up on those Nature's Point definitions page. So I really think that needs to be up in one of the first wherashes in your recital. A second law agreement talks about three point seven acres. And Nature's Point is seven point three acres, which is only half the property. So how does the other half of the property get created? Because it looks like it's omitted. I don't know if that was by accident or, or that, or maybe maybe there's another development incoming. Third point is, is that easement rights over those four property owners between Lakeshore and Nature's Point is a huge, huge risk. I was involved with that earlier. And you guys need to button that up before you approve this thing. And I mean legally. And I would have stuff signed and on it, because there were sign bombs and some stuff that we saw earlier. And then I guess the last point deals with the economic development agreement itself. The, I don't think this has ever given an incentive where property taxes were abated or reduced for anything. We've done sales tax payments, so we may have done some hotel motel tax abatements. I do not recall ever seeing property taxes being or reduced.
Yeah, you're cutting in and out.
So first of all, I, I think if you're gonna give them any kind of incentive.
Yeah, we're, we're, we've lost you, Ron.
Oh, which, I don't know that I even agree with that, but if it was, I would think sales tax would be a better one to look at, because half of the cap metro anyway. As far as as the development agreement, when I look at the the code of ordinances, section one dot two, the minimum program requirements talk about taxable values, property taxable values or sales tax values. And, and it's increased, didn't say eliminated, it's an increased. So you might want to take a look at your code under section one, one dot. And then under another one where it has additional considerations, they're looking for sales tax generation. They don't even really consider property taxes in this document.
Ron. I need to interrupt you for a second.
Section one dot two, the minimum program requirements, I have a violation there if you, if you read the letter of the law. Really?
Come out, Ron. Okay, I don't know if it's your network, your, your, your body movements are about two minutes ahead of your voice.
About fifty percent.
And, and we're losing everything, so. If you would, can you, can you please, all your, all your stuff? No.
Mayor, he's good on the chat. He's gonna send us in the comments, and when soon as Ron sends them in, I'll get those shared to.
Yeah, please, put it, please put everything in an email or something for us. I, I've, I kind of caught most of what you were saying, but not all of it. So if you can send us an email, and so we can work, so staff and the council members that are gonna be meeting can, can work and, and get back with you on the, on your concerns. I do, I do think, if I'm remembering correctly, the 380 agreement, I do have one comment on the 380. The Vista Village 380 agreement does include some property tax relief for the building owner. The actual businesses, the 380 agreement that was with the businesses was a sales tax issue, but the actual owner of the property does include some property taxes. So it has been done before. Not, they haven't been able to take advantage of it yet, but it's in there. Alright, so is there anybody else before we move on? Laura, did you have anything else to add? Frank, Laura's typing, so Frank, go ahead.
Motion to table or postpone?
Okay, which is it?
Well, I would move that we postpone consideration of this until our first meeting in May. I, I don't know if that's the right date, Josh, or not, but that's what we were talking about.
May seventh is the date, Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
It's my motion, we postpone consideration until the seventh of May, our meeting is the seventh of May.
Second. Arch got it in.
No, he didn't.
Mayor, Laura asked if that means that the council, if the documentation is completed, will the council consider a vote on May seventh at that meeting?
Unknown.
Unknown, yeah. Yeah. That's just the next time, the motion would be that's the next time it's gonna come up. That doesn't mean we're gonna approve, deny, or not postpone till another, some more. Who knows?
Until we get everything what we're interested in, I think it'll be a discussion.
Yep, we'll see when it comes to putting it on the agenda where we're at, whether it'll be a discussion item or whether it's for possible action. Alright, so I've got a motion and a second. All those, do you have further discussion, Frank?
Let me amend my motion then. Let me amend my motion then. If I might. I have to that we, that we postponed discussion and possible consideration till May 7th. Was consideration and so it
Okay.
I would move rather than consideration that we postpone discussion and possible consideration to the 7th.
Okay. Arch, are you good with that?
I am.
Okay. So we have some clarification. I have the motion and second. All those in favor will say aye, all those opposed nay, and we'll start with Dave Williams.
Aye.
And still don't see Don. Arch?
Aye.
Tim Collins?
Aye.
Dick Weatherly?
Aye.
Frank Robbins made the motion. Excuse me, sorry. And I vote aye as well. So the motion, the, um, motion carries, it will be postponed until the May 7th council meeting. Six zero. All right. So now we're going to go back to where we at number six. We're on action item number six.
What page is that on, please?
What page? Number six?
Yeah.
Arch on page 145.
Thank you.
All right. Action item number six, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding funds transfer from utility fund to impact fee funds. Okay. This is in relation to the ESD 1 impact fees that we granted them the waiver of, um, back, oh, a few months ago. I'm not exactly sure. I don't remember now, January, February, uh, whenever the timeframe was, uh, but in our ordinance, you know, the exemption or waiver. When I, if we, once it's granted, the, um, the amount of the impact fee due for a new development under this section, so cause, um, funds to be appropriated from other city funds, the amount of the reduction in the impact fee to the capital improvements account. So we need to transfer front from another account into impact fee fund to satisfy, um, the impact. We waived $81,840 in impact fees for ESD 1 for their two fire stations. Uh, staff is recommending the 81,840 to come from the utility, utility operating account. If approved, we add this, we will have to add a future budget amendment. Uh, so this will not, you know, there won't be the last time we hit, we see this, but the next time it will be just for a budget amendment. So I'm assuming that, and Josh can weigh in on this here in a little bit. I'm assuming the recommendation for the utility fund, uh, is because, you know, impact fees are related to utilities. Cause otherwise we'd have to pull it from like the general fund or something like that. Uh, so I'm assuming because this is water and wastewater, that the utility fee is the appropriate place to pull this money from. And I need to go back and, and amend a statement that I made back when we were considering this. Yeah, I was under the impression at that time that, um, the fee, the impact fees, um, was not necessarily money lost. It was just money that we were not going to get. Uh, what I failed to read into it was because our impact fees are structured in such a way that when we include some, what do you call them? Connections or what some line extensions, whatever it is, whatever the impact is, that takes out of that system as a whole. And so, um, it does end up being an actual, um, money lost to cover that hole in that impact fee structure. So I had incorrectly stated, you know, that, um, I did not include this $81,840 as a possible, uh, double tax on our citizens. And so now that we are having to pull money out of the utility fund to cover, uh, the impact fee hole, um, that is money that is, it's not necessarily a taxation, but it is a fee of for services in our utility department. So that is, um, that is money that is lost to our cit, to our citizens to cover, the fire department construction. I don't know, had I stated it correctly at that time, if it would have changed, you know, anybody's decision, but it would have at least made the citizens more aware that, um, by granting this $81,840 in waivers to the SD one that, uh, it is, it is a true, a, a true direct impact on, um, the, the monies they put into a, an account, in this case, utility. So Josh and staff, does anybody else have anything to?
Once again, you're exactly on you. These were the things we pointed out during those discussions was that it's not just something that disappears. It has to be, the way you develop impact fees is if it doesn't happen, it has to be satisfied. So, uh, we did have this discussion briefly. I don't think you misstated then, but as you said, it, it wasn't something that seemed to matter. What it matters now in terms of this $81,840 is every utility customer is therefore paying that amount, amount. So, um, I, I think that's the, that's the challenge that, that we stated before. And hopefully people understand when we're looking at economic structures. And the reason we said utility fund and not just utility fund reserve is at the end of the year, if this amount of 81,840 is, uh, revenues exceeding expenditures, then we'll pay it out of that. If not, it would come out of the utility fund balance, which is estimated, uh, 2.8 or so. So back to what you're saying, it has to be satisfied. It can't just magically disappear. So you're correct, Mayor.
Right. And if I understand it correctly, the only alternative would be to go back and do another impact fee study and re, and redo the entire structure of our impact fees to account for this. Because of the way it's set up now. So, you know, I don't know if it would change it a whole lot, but, uh, you know, we'd still have to account for that 80, roughly $82,000 in some form or fashion.
That's correct, Mayor. We've got to cover that amount. Uh, the SD did pay, uh, half of that. So they paid the, if you recall, they did pay the impact fees for the Bronco Station. They had not paid the impact fees for the Lowman Station. But however, it's not about what they paid because as council made the direction, we're going to refund and waive the items that they have. And we just need to make sure that the dollars are sufficiently placed into the impact fee fund.
All right. Uh, council, y'all have any questions? Dave?
No.
Arch?
I'm good.
Tim?
The, the last comment about refunding. What's that again? If you'll explain that, are we going to be losing more money on this deal?
Mayor, to clarify what it is, is that ESD paid some money for the Bronco Station. When they didn't, they had a balance of roughly 68,000 or so on impact fees and, um, other fees for the Lowman Station. We're going to have to, how the council said was basically give them back those dollars and then waive everything else plus add some dollars. So make them whole for what they've spent and don't charge them anything for those two stations. So yes, we're going to refund part of those dollars and then waive the other part so that pretty much anything that the ESD paid to develop two fire stations will go back to their pocket.
Yeah, it did. I guess on the, on the briefing, it could have been written that city council waived 40 something thousand dollars and refunded 40 something thousand for a total of 81,840. Uh, but the way it's written, it just says waived 81,840. Uh, but it's like half and half. Waiver and refund. Uh, Mr. Weatherly? Okay. We can't hear you. So we'll go to Frank.
No questions?
Yeah. All right. I didn't see on my list of anybody that signed up for questions on this one from citizens.
I do not have anything, Mayor.
Okay. So at this time it is open for action.
Guys, it's just what we have to do. It's what we
I'm hearing noise, but.
That might've been the slowest delay we've seen yet, Mayor.
I tell you, it's, it's just what we have. Well, I'm ready to get this done and start with a zero balance with these folks. So I'll make a motion that we waive $81,840 in impact fees for ESD 1 to assist ESD in constructing their two fire stations in Laguna Vista. And that gives us a zero balance with them. And from this point on.
That is not what, Tim, that is not what we are considering tonight. We've already waived all that stuff. We've already done all that. Right now we are considering transferring money from utility to the impact fees.
Oh, that's the second line. Okay. So how do you word it? Just approve transferring 81,840 from the utility fund operating account into the impact fee fund?
Bingo. Second. I think Arch, Arch got it in there again. Dick, we can't hear a word you're saying, Dick. It comes in about three minutes after you speak. So. All right. So I've got a, got the motion and a second. Going down the list, Dave Williams.
Aye.
Archie Davila.
Aye.
Tim Collins?
Aye.
Dick Weatherly, you may have to raise your hand or up or down. All right. Got a thumbs up. So there's four. Frank Robbins?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. So transfer is, uh, has passed six to nothing.
Mayor, I just typed into the chat function. If anyone's having issues with sound, we start missing. If you turn off your video, you can, you'll have, you won't eat us up as much bandwidth. So you should have better, um, ability to get your sound to travel through. The sound should travel. The light may not travel.
So that high quality internet service we got now that's been slowed because 400 and something billion people are at home all trying to watch Netflix over their computers right now.
Or city council meetings.
Yeah, or city council meetings. Yes, that's it. Um, all right. So we will go to number seven. Discussion, consideration and possible action on the construction contract award for the phase two street rehab, Boggy Ford Road and authorized city manager to execute the contract. Um, I don't know if I want to read this whole thing here, but we just had a bid opening for the Boggy Ford Rehab phase two of the project. You know, we went and packed, did the, the base work and patching last year. Now we're looking at phase two. Uh, city receives six bids. Two inch overlay of Boggy Ford, approximately 56,931 square yards, including the tie-ins. And an alternate of a inch and a half overlay of Thunderbird for approximately 10,400 square yards, including tie-ins. Consists of adding and removing traffic buttons, striping and tying into intersection roads. Uh, according to the staff report, Bennett paving offered the best value to the city as well as the lowest bid as a unit price total of 602,606,68 cents. Includes an added alternate scope of overlaying Thunderbird. Uh, the review of the tabulated bids indicates that low bidder used bid amounts that were both appropriate and competitive for the project. And you can see the tabulated, uh, bids in your packet. Uh, see funding, the city has available funding of approximately 920,000 to cover this project. Only partially the cost of construction through the CIP budget. Unfortunately, the city has another project up for bid, which are 10 streets rehab. And that'll be number eight coming up with micro and slurry. The available funding, if the full Boggy and Thunderboard, Thunderbird is awarded is only 317, 393. Okay. So staff recommends the contract for the phase two street rehab Boggy Ford Road be awarded to the selected bidder. 527, 921 for the base bid to include added alternate with a total of 602, 606, 68. And so I'm going to start with the first question. Um, cause I'm kind of confused about this funding. As we have 920,000 to cover this project, um, but only partially through the CIP. So what is exactly in CIP? Is that the 317, 393? And then we got to come up with the rest?
Mayor, the two items are basically conjoined together. So one of the things we were talking about is potentially opening up both of them at the same time. But let me answer the question. The CIP, you started out with a million dollars for these projects. We've used, uh, approximately $80,000 of that to do some of the prep work and other work on streets out of CIP for this project. So that will leave out of the million, that'll leave the $920,000. So looking at this item, which is Boggy and Thunderbird, and then looking at the next agenda item, you're going to have a potential shortfall that the staff is recommending, uh, using some money out of the streets operating budget, which is roughly $100,000. And then using our build central Texas funds that we get from cap metro of 42,000 to satisfy the overall budget of $1,087,318 if council approves both contracts. Even with that, there would still be a $17,318 funding gap, which you'll see on page 150. So we're, we're pulling those pots together because this is what the council had said in the beginning, when we budgeted for street projects this year, these are the things we want to do. And so these are the projects that total funding, uh, we think we can make it work within the budget.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, read number eight in as well so that we can talk about them both at the same time. Uh, please note, we will have to have separate motions on these council. Uh, but it, uh, I'm going to open up number eight because the numbers are tied together. Uh, so number eight is a discussion, consideration and possible action on the construction contract award for phase one street rehab, micro surfacing and slurry seal authorized city manager to negotiate the, and execute the contract. So, uh, I already read to you about the Boggy Ford and Thunderbird Road, uh, phase two project, uh, which is estimated or is valued at a little over $602,000. Uh, the rest of this, the number eight is 10 streets. Uh, six of which, micro surfacing of six streets, which is 57,400. Uh, six of which, Microsurfacing of six streets, which is fifty seven thousand four hundred and sixty three square yards, and Slurry Seal of four streets, approximately sixty six thousand eight hundred and twenty three square yards. Um, I'll go back to the contractor at a later time, but just I just want to touch on the numbers here. Um, four hundred and eighty four.
Mr. Mayor, you got that backwards. It's Microsurfacing four streets and slurring six streets.
That's not what mine says.
Are you looking at page fifty?
No, I'm looking at page one fifty, one fifty four. That says here, the proposed improvements up for bid consists of Microsurfacing of six streets, da, 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 and an added alternate of Slurry Seal for four streets, approximately sixty six. Um, so if that's not correct, and it's just this was written incorrectly.
Mayor, Micro six, Slurry four. That's correct.
Micros. All right. So anyway, four hundred and eighty four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents. So when you add the four eighty four to the six oh two, now we're coming up with now I understand where the shortfall is coming up because that's a little over a billion. One point one million. So we're short the monies. And that's where you were talking about the forty two thousand for our Build Central Texas from Cap Metro, a hundred thousand from the street department materials line. And then what did you say seventeen thousand?
That would be the gap, Mayor. You you have a couple options there. We either make a motion if council approves both to say that you're you're going to use that funding gap, or we say that just out of our operating budget out of the street fund, we're going to have to find those dollars. The reason I ask that you open them both, Mayor, because there are additional street projects that we want to bid out and get those bids and bring back to council this year. And so basically doing these two projects, these two sets of projects will clean out all available funding. But that'll still leave a few streets in the improvement plan, the streets overlay improvement plan that would need attention in F Y twenty.
Okay. Um, so on number eight, when you said that when it says on your staff is asking council to consider the viability of adding another five hundred and fifty thousand, is that are we are you looking at for us to take action on that now or just to consider it in the future?
No, sir. Just want you to be aware that in order to finish out the final ten streets that are on the F Y twenty street improvement plan, based on the estimates that we have this time around, that shortfall would be another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's why when we when we talked about the overall street improvement plan, and we said, there's only so many streets you can do in a year, for one reason, because it requires the prep work, which everybody's seeing every day. The second reason is the money is a lot. And then the third reason is you can only block up so much traffic during the course of the year with these projects. And they're going to over, I guess, overlap overlay. And so that's the challenge that we face. But as you already know, Mayor, if we move two, three, ten streets from F Y twenty to F Y twenty one, then therefore we're moving the same number of streets from twenty one to twenty two. So it's our it's our request to get these street projects going soon, and then to to go ahead and bid out the other projects and bring back those numbers separately to council. But that five fifty was just to give you an idea of what's to come here in the next month and a half.
Okay. So I'm I'm going to set number eight aside for right now and go back to number seven, which just deals with the Boggy Ford Rehab Boggy Ford and Thunderbird, uh, Phase Two Rehab. Counsel, do y'all have any questions? Dave?
No, so so basically, we're approving the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for right now for the two streets.
Mayor, for that phase for Boggy and Thunderbird, six oh two plus or minus, but you're not approving that one. What you're the only reason the six oh two is there is to give you the basis of the bid. If the council moves forward with this and selects the the recommended bidder, because that's what you're going to consider. You're going to consider the contractors and select the contractor. Then you're going to provide if you do that, you'll provide direction for me to negotiate the contract and execute it so we can move forward. That's the critical element here because in the process, that gives us the ability to to go back to the contractor and say, hey, council selected you. Now we've got to make the numbers work so that we can get the projects done. So you're not the six oh two is just your factual number based on their bid. You're selecting the contractor.
Got it.
Question, everyone?
Hey, I get it. I get it.
I got a collegial question.
Hold on, let me make it. Let me make a statement real quick before you go, Frank. Uh, I'm going to excuse myself for about thirty seconds, minute, maybe take me a minute. Uh, so um, address all your questions to either Mayor Pro Tim Weatherly or or staff, and I'll be back as fast as I can.
Why don't we recess for a minute?
Well, I don't want everybody to get up and go away at one point. I've I've noticed I've noticed everybody going one at a time, which has been great. But if I recessed, then everybody's going to run off and God knows what happens. So no, we're not going to do that. I'm just going to run down the hall real quick.
This is a legal this is a legal question for what Josh just says. And I'm I think I'm okay with your concept, Josh, but we have in this process, the contractor has given us a hard and fast number that cannot be exceeded unless the terms of the contract spell out how that could be done. Correct?
Are you asking if there's a not to exceed amount? Are you saying maybe the council would have select the contractor with a not to exceed? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the this is going to get complicated. If we if we did sealed bid, and we didn't do that, we did value. Uh, we that's the method we use to get the contractor. But if we did seal bids, that's a hard and fast number, period, end of message.
Correct. And we're not sealed bid. So we're doing best value. And so since we're doing that, you know, part of your discussion was before was to what we were doing before was negotiating it and then bringing it to you at our final number. I'm still saying I'm requesting that in the wording, you say authorize the city manager to negotiate the contract and execute it because personally, I still feel that when we look at the best value, we may be able to negotiate a better number if we're going back and having that discussion.
I'm good. I'm I'm great with that. I'm good with that. And legally, I think we can do it. But I'm just confirming that.
We can only go down.
Okay, that's my point. You can't go over six oh two, six oh eight unless you come back. Correct?
That's correct.
The the reason why I was saying earlier, Mayor Pro Tim, the mayor, we said earlier was that we want to we don't need to appropriate the seventeen thousand gap that we have because that allows us to use that window to negotiate our contract with these contractors and to try and satisfy the project based on the amount of dollars that are that has been allocated by the council. The only only sad part is the grant that there's still ten more streets.
Yeah, here here's what I here's what I thought we would do. One, we could approve the a motion simple like on seven, approve the contract for our city manager to do a saying not to exceed six oh two, da, 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 da. Second, on the A, approve the contractor authorized city manager negotiate and execute. And I hear what you're saying, Josh, and I appreciate that. But I want I would I would make the motion with the motion on eight. If necessary, have the city manager come back with a budget amendment for the seventeen. Now, if without that motion on the seventeen, you could come back anyway, though, right?
Correct. We would still bring it back to council if we need a budget amendment. Remember, I think any shortfall that we have will operate within the street fund. If we were in if if we were in August, then I'd be a little more challenged. But since we're in April, then theoretically, the seventeen thousand can be absorbed in the one point three million dollar street fund.
So how do we word a not to exceed in the motion?
I think, and Mayor, now you're back, Mayor, I think the answer is is selecting the contractor, authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract and the not to exceed amount of six oh two and some change and to execute the contract.
Okay, then then if we do the same thing with eight, we're going to be seventeen grand short.
But I think you go with the number because that's the that's the.
Okay, I got it. I hear you. I'm fine. Thanks.
Everybody will be eager to get to work. We'll have all kind of permits pulled and plan reviews and that fifty cents per square foot that we added on earlier will make up that seventeen thousand dollars.
Mayor, if we generate that two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars next year, we're going to need that to put into these street projects.
Bingo.
All right, where are we at? Does everybody ask their question? Everybody asked her questions while I was gone?
I think I ran out of questions, Mayor.
Darn. We're good. I don't know either way. All right. Well, we'll start with number seven. Um, I'll accept. I'll accept action on agenda item number seven, which is the Boggy Ford.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to check to see if we have any public comments on these items?
Oh, I know I don't have anybody signed up.
Okay.
I don't have anybody signed up until number nine, and I can only see one citizen, and she hasn't raised her hand. So um, the others would have to type in or something because their faces aren't on here. So I believe we're good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Bennett Paving Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and two thousand six oh six sixty eight. And that we give permission to the city manager to execute and negotiate the contract.
My second.
All right. I think the motion is to award the contract to Bennett Paving and then to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with a not to exceed amount of the six oh two, six oh six, sixty eight. Is that is that correct?
That's correct.
The wording there, you you're saying award the contract. I typically think that the if we're going with the process, it is selecting the contractor. You could say to award award the contract, but I will let Erin, if she has the better terminology, I still think the proper is selecting the contractor and going through the process. But semantically, I don't know which way is best. Award or select the contractor, Aaron?
Yeah.
Either one is legally sufficient. You're still gonna you but you just need to make sure that the motion is clear that you're authorizing the city manager to negotiate the final number, unless you want to simply accept the six oh two number from them.
Yeah, so I think that works then, Mayor, because Mayor Pro Tim said negotiate and execute.
Yes.
Okay. So who has got the motion? Who is my second?
Tim.
Tim. All right. So I have a motion and a second. As always, yea or nay? Dave Williams?
Hi, nay? Hi.
Hi, okay. Uh, Archie Davila?
Hi.
Tim Collins?
Hi.
Dick Weatherly?
Hi.
Frank Robbins?
Hi.
Myself, I. Okay, six to nothing unanimous on number seven. Now number eight. Which is the other contract award. We were looking at Inner Mountain Slurry. They offered the best value at four eighty four, seven eleven, twenty. Contractor were given the option to propose their own construction duration, which was taken into account in proposal. The contractors proposing one hundred and fifty days likely completion in November of twenty twenty. Do we know if that is still? They're essential, so nothing should have really changed with that, correct?
That's right. But we're going to we're going to have that discussion with them if council gives us the go ahead to negotiate on that one and and get them accelerated, basically with the idea that if, you know, when you've got another bid going out for these additional ten streets, if they've got an active contract with the city that's not been fulfilled yet, then we don't really want to recognize their their bid offer. And you'll notice that we only received two for the slurry and the microsurfacing, whereas we received five for the larger overlay project. So I think I think they'll be more inclined, knowing that we're going to try and look at the other projects to get the projects done completed here as soon as possible.
All right. Um, so we have already discussed the funding of that. Everybody's everybody understands how it's written and how the two go together as far as the funding and everything. Uh, we're short about two hundred thousand, and we're having to pull a hundred from the street department and forty two thousand from well, we're not pulling it. That's money given to us by Cap Metro because they are such a nice organization that they give us money back. Everybody's everybody understands, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. On the I'm not familiar with proposing a hundred and fifty days with completion in twenty twenty. Do they do they stop and start? How what are they? How do they come up with this?
Mayor, what happens is since there are ten total streets here, and you have slurry and microsurfacing, what they're going to do is they're going to look at their the the flexibility option was provided to these guys because the project is a smaller project. For the projects such as Thunderbird or Boggy Ford, they'll come in, they'll start on it, and they'll see it through to the end. For this project, since the dollars are lower, what they'll do is they'll have projects somewhere else. Then they'll break off a project there, and they'll come over here. They'll knock out their four streets. Then they'll go back and do their bigger project somewhere. Then they'll come back over here and probably do three streets and then three streets. So they're not going to stop on an individual street. What they'll do is they'll cluster them so they can fit this smaller job in with a larger job.
Is there a hard stop in November?
You mean for us, if we put that in the contract that says it will be completed by November?
Yeah.
Yeah. If they said that the hundred that the hundred and fifty days is what they put into their proposal and the dollar figure, we're going to keep those as the ceiling and the hard stop be finished. Well, not hard stop. It'll be be finished by then.
All right. Question?
Yes, Frank.
And I don't know if this in the contract, I don't I haven't read it. But are you talking liquidated damages if they don't make hundred? Okay.
The contract will definitely read that if they don't make that one fifty, liquidated damages start on one fifty one. And we actually call that the Arts Davila contract clause. And so that's, I mean, they put that number in there, and that's why it's important. But that'll be our liquidated damages date.
Thanks.
I have a question. I'm looking at the I'm looking at the list of the streets that are going to be involved in that smaller project. And we're talking about ten streets. But the list that I'm looking at has like fifteen of them, fifteen or sixteen, some of which, um, city itself is going to take on. Am I looking at? Am I looking at the correct list? This is.
Mayor, yes, you're looking at the correct, you're looking at the correct list. You're looking at, I think you're looking at page 158, and you'll see on there that you've got a couple, even National Drive has two different sections.
Oh, I see. Gotcha.
You've got a couple split ups there, and then the first item on both is the mobilization. So instead of having the list of streets, it actually includes the mobilization twice. And so you've got 13 line items, minus two mobilization items, that brings it down to 11, and then you've got the national that splits it up.
Right, I got you. Well, so the other question that I had was in looking at what is being proposed here is a series of streets, some which, some of which are coves. Now, I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but I think that our people, they're taking on, I think, two of those places, two of them, two of those streets, one of them is a cove. Coves are typically fairly short, so wouldn't we consider having the city do all the coves wherever they come up? Wouldn't that be a consideration?
The problem for us now is trying to, to get the projects completed in a good price. Our guys don't do micro-surfacing. What we can do is our crews do the overlay, not the micro. So the dollars are differently there. So you're not going to see our guys trying to go into any type of street to do a micro. We just don't have that, that knowledge base.
Okay, well, I, the list that I'm looking at.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The list that I'm looking at has Cabot, Codit Cove, and Mount Laurel as being streets that our crew's going to do, because it says city. I'm guessing that that means our crew.
Correct. And so on that list, that's on page 159, those are overlays and not micro. So go up to 158 and that'll show you the, the list that this bid's going for.
Okay.
On 159, that does show city on those, and those are, those are overlay projects. It looks like they're both overlays of one and a quarter inch, and that's what our guys can do that we've been doing. It's kind of what you see out here in the parking lot if you were ever at City Hall.
No, I never go there.
I know you people are everywhere else now, so.
No, I was thinking that for any of these projects where we can utilize, utilize our own crews, that's a direction to go in if we can. I'm not just talking about this year, I'm talking about in the future when we have these little short streets, maybe something that they can train on and, and execute.
And that's our goal. That's why we ordered that equipment. The challenge is still to make sure the micro-surfacing is going to be less expensive for us using a contractor in micro instead of us doing an overlay with our crews. And so we're still trying to make sure we maximize that, that capital dollar to get as much as we can and get the best quality of streets. But you're right, that's our goal 100%.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope this isn't out of order. The question relates to which streets do we do? And this, and the staff has put together a really comprehensive list of which streets and when. I'm particularly interested in Green Park, which we saw some pictures of when we had a case, and it's in my neighborhood and people are building houses on the part of the street. It's in really bad shape. So how do we get a street moved up like Green Park, which may be the worst street with houses on it in town?
Mayor, my recommendation is when we enter into the review plan for the budget, council looks at the number of jobs that we have completed. We look at the jobs, the streets that are for the next year, and if there's going to be movement, that is when movement should occur, because that way we can, we can satisfy and check off the list the completed items. And that would happen here in the next couple of months, and I think that's a good, that's the best practice for us to update that street improvement plan, instead of saying it just gets wild, out of control, and then in another five years, we got to do a new plan. This gives us an annual review of it that'll work out nicely.
Yeah, I think we've known all along that things may change and will change. So a street that had nobody living on it was, you know, it may have had a high score as far as needing repair, but it was put down, down the list a few years because of, there was nobody on it. So we do have to go back and, and review our plan, but we also have to make sure that any changes, if we're bringing something forward from three years or four years out, that whoever it gets, whoever it gets delayed, if somebody gets delayed, you know, that we're not, we're not causing them harm, you know, so we definitely have to review it every year, though.
I think Green Park is a 2022 project, Mayor. It's not even a 2021, so we would, we would effectively move one up one year and one back. So if anybody here wants to volunteer their street now, we'll go ahead and start moving it out. No hands?
Okay. Let's see. Dick, have you made any comments? Did, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right. Have I, have I, have I covered all the council members? Is there anybody else? Okay. And I do not have anybody signed up to speak on this one either. So. If everybody's done with this discussion, then agenda item number eight, I'll accept action. At this time.
Mr. Mayor? Make a motion that we accept Intermountain Slurry Incorporated as the business for the 10 streets that we have approved with the contract of 484,711 dollars and 20 cents as the top amount, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and negotiate a better price if possible.
Second.
Second.
All right, so I've, I've got a motion to award the construction contract to Inner Mountain Slurry and authorize city manager to negotiate and execute the contract with a not to exceed amount of 484,711 and 20 cents. Is that correct? Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion and a second from Dave Williams, I believe, Sandra.
Yes.
Who I heard. So I'll call, is there any other further discussion? All right, not seeing any. All right, so I'll go down the list with the ayes and nays and, Dave Williams?
Aye.
Don hasn't come back. Arch?
Aye.
Tim Collins?
Aye.
Dick Weatherly?
Aye.
Frank Robbins?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Contract is awarded, unanimous. And we go to number nine. Woo. What time is it? 10 o'clock. All right, discussion, consideration and possible action on the recommendations for the Airport Advisory Board. Airport Advisory Board discussed the following items and made the request to city council to consider taking action on these. Airport capital improvement plan, construction of hangars on the south end of the airport, and rezoning of airport from light industrial to C4. So they're asking us to consider them and possibly take future action. I don't believe there's any action to be taken tonight other than maybe giving some direction to staff. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Josh and let him discuss the three items and we can advise them on what we want to do, if we want to do anything.
Thanks, Mayor. I apologize. Airport Advisory Board Chairman Glenn Chappie was in the meeting, and then he tapped out about 8:26. I think he was tired, needed a nap, and so Frank and I will have to carry this. And I think Roy's still here, he just turned his video off. So you're exactly correct, Mayor. What we want to do is present these three general topics to the council and then get the go ahead from council to say, let's bring these items back individually to the council for consideration. So the three topics there, the first one's the airport improvement plan. I did include information on existing airport improvement plan, and then I think yesterday, might have been yesterday or today, I emailed out the updated minutes from the Airport Advisory Board to council to review. If I can share my screen here, I want to put these minutes up on, on the screen here, just so you can look at them. These haven't been approved by the Airport Advisory Board at this time, but they are the draft minutes that these, that the Airport Advisory Board discussed. So one of the things that that board wants to do is, is get a new airport capital improvement plan approved by the council, and they want that, that airport improvement plan approved so that not only is, are the airport projects part of the city's CIP capital improvement plan, but also on the funding mechanism that the airport would use for both, excuse me, Tech dot aviation and for the FAA for our funding request. Since we've been growing the airport over the last few years, part of the challenge now is if we think we can get our needs met, then why don't we go after it? So the AAB is looking at both the short-term projects and the long-term projects. The current airport action plan, for example, focused on property that was across, it was on the east, southeast side of the runway and developing out properties over there. The current Airport Advisory Board wants to consider focusing on the southwest end of the runway and property near the entrance where the council has recently purchased a couple of lots. So we can see that as time changes, some of the needs change. This is what that larger airport capital improvement plan is all about, is trying to, to figure out what the direction of the airport is and trying to, to determine the most vital elements of that airport. That's the big picture item, Mayor, and that's one of the, one of the biggest things that we need to have both entities thinking about and having staff tied in, having Tech tied in. The second project, which is a very specific project, is constructing hangars on the south end of the airport. The hangar project is something that the chairman brought forward, and I'm sliding over my agenda to the council just so I can slide down and show you. These are the airport action plan items that's already in your agenda packet there. What Chairman Chappie brought to the AAB and to staff was this area on my screen, where you see this nice, fantastic yellow arrow pointing to a yellow triangle piece of property, that's where he was proposing that we build hangars. Now, not T-hangers, but we would build on this city-owned property, a row of seven to nine hangars that we would lease out as a revenue stream. This project gained some traction with staff and with not only the Property Owners Association there, but with the AAB, because potentially we could get 9010 or 7525 funding to build this project. Mr. Chappie went through and did an estimate on what he thinks it would cost to build the project, and he came out with a number anywhere from 400 to 500,000. If we, if we receive 9010 money on that, then city's going to put in 5,000,000 if we, about 50,000 if we have 7525, then we may have 100, 150,000 into it. But one of the things that Chappie did was he looked at the numbers for the revenue generation, and at the small, at the, at the short end, if you do seven hangars at 300 a month times 12 months a year, and you're estimating 100% occupancy, that's 25,000 in revenue. If you get the full nine hangars at 300 a month times the 12, then you're going to have 32.4 at 100% occupancy. At 80% occupancy, you're going to be back down to about 26. So he looked at the benefit of what the cost and the, the return of investment was going to be for this project. So bringing this to council, we want council to consider this overall project, because when we bring it back individually, we would like to see if council supports us focusing on this area. This area is not included in the airport action plan. It's not being placed onto our CIP. It would be something that we are recommending back to Tech dot and FAA as a standalone project. It's not a large capital improvement project, but it's a project that definitely needs the support of council to move forward. One of the things that staff has done so far is in order to build in this area that's on the screen, we have to have that zone reviewed and approved by the FAA, because you're at the end of a runway and that's a runway improvement area. If it's not approved, then you can't even think about it. We haven't received approval yet. We received approval to, to extend the taxiway down from this area here down to here, but we haven't received approval to actual build the hangars. We wouldn't build the taxiway if we couldn't build the hangars because that's not a need at this time. But that item itself, Mayor, if you think about it, if last year's audit said that we were finally at a point of revenue positive of 6,000, if we could generate revenue stream of 20, 30, 40,000, this may allow us the opportunity to not only have the matching funds start going into that account, but maybe to start putting in a part-time staff person that manages the airport and the property and takes that off of, off the other crews that are doing other work right now around the city. So, so that one, it almost seems like a no-brainer. It still has the same problem as when we look at our street projects and what I was saying earlier about KSW. It still has to go out to bid. It's, it's a little tricky to figure out from a private side what those estimates are and then try and compare that to the city side. We have different regulations that private individuals do not have to adhere to, and so the, the guestimates are nice to get the thought process going, but we would go out to a formal bid and then see what those numbers are to bring that back to council just in itself. So that's, that's those first two areas. Any questions just generally on those two? Go ahead.
Wait, Arch?
Yes. Is this the area, the, the area where we just bought that, that particular real estate?
Look back at the screen here where I scrolled in. This project, this property here was purchased a few years ago before all of us came in. The property that we purchased recently was right, here's the entryway to the airport, and the property purchased is right here. This would be the E property and this would be the AWAL property.
Okay.
And this, this area here is something that, that the AAB and members of staff thinks is also a valuable area to expand. So we're thinking that part of that airport improvement plan would include developing this area like we've talked about and maybe not developing out this area over here at this time, because amenity development and additional hangar space potentially, or FBO services, we could have increased value here.
Absolutely.
But what this one, the, the benefit of trying to tackle this project now is, as we keep saying, if it's a low-hanging fruit, this could be the value add for creating a revenue stream now so that we have dollars to invest in other projects.
Right.
And that's why it's, that's why it's attractive. That's why when, when it was brought to staff and to the AAB, I think it was so well-received because just basic numbers and, and guestimates go, yeah, that could be, that could be good.
Josh, can I ask a question? You were basing it on 100% occupancy rate. Does that mean that there is a general feel that people are looking for hangar space and? and have a lack of hangar space right now?
Mayor, that's correct. So what we recommend with the text dot and FAA numbers is I think it's 82.6% occupancy. It's somewhere in that vicinity that we use for, for our calculations. We wouldn't recommend 100%, because we would use the standard. But I did say that, because that's what, that's what Chappy used in his numbers and computations. What he is saying, and what I think what Roy and I have seen, is that there is a significant demand for the hangars. I think that if we, for one, FAA would look at it and they would say, or text out would look at it and they would say that we've got to show them that demand. They would start doing a little internal analysis to see if that demand is there. And talking to our pilots, Roy receives contact from people looking for space often. And, and the crazy thing is, as we talked about with the tie-down spaces, well, people want those tie-downs and then they start, they, they want more. And so they want a transitional. If you remember, we were trying to figure out if we had short-term, long-term, and then hangars that would give us a diverse portfolio of revenue streams for the airport. So I, I think, I think seven to 12 hangars would easily be satisfied by the city. And especially if we get a market rate of somewhere around $300 to $350 a month. Chappy's numbers had it up to closer to $500 a month. But I think the safe number from what we saw through text dot numbers was individual hangars, we could get three to 350.
Josh, with everything we got, you know, going on was, you know, just as a city in general, I mean, do we have, do we have the ability to start looking into some more of the stuff at the airport? You know, the rezoning with Roy, construction of, I guess that would be part of our engineering.
It would, Mayor. And I think that's a great question. That, that goes back to kind of what that lead-in for, for that. If a revenue stream is generated and you do end up with a part-time person and that person can oversee, and, and not a, not a very technical individual per se, but just a person that can oversee the general operations of, of mowing and cleaning and updating, there's a value. When it comes into these overall capital projects, this is part of the reason we brought on Victor in engineering, is so that he can be out there with projects as well. And another reason why we've talked about on the planning aspects of looking at a, an associate planner for, for Roy is based on the demands, these things have to happen. One value that we have is that our close proximity to Austin and to the planners at text dot, they can help us a little more than what people a little farther away can utilize. But it would take time from Roy for sure and from Eric. So yeah, Mayor, it would pull them, it would pull some of their time, but we would just have, we would have to plan that time accordingly. I, I think right now during this pandemic response is a better time for us to plan and do some reviews than when the doors open back up and we have a lot of traffic coming in.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Anecdotally speaking, I've had a, in the last couple of years, had contact with two pilots that have their planes based probably within 100 miles that said they would use this if we had space with their breath. Just any, you know, just side conversations, nothing. There was an interest expressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, another question for Josh is are these hangars for one plane? Or are these multiple planes in one hangar or?
So there's two different functions for how, how we would set this up. To answer the first question, if you're looking down here at the area marked, these would be individual hangars with individual doors. So each person would have their own private hangar and their own private door. If you're building this larger space up here, or over here, and you're putting that hangar there, that's called a, like a community hangar, then you would put potentially eight different planes inside of this open floor plan. But then you would be responsible for having staff that would move planes in and out so that the liability comes back. That's why I think this one is a, is a more simple approach at this time, because we don't have staff that's going to be moving planes in and out. And so these would be individual.
Okay. And would they be built all at the same time or is this staggered?
They would. The, the plan would be that you go ahead and you have one, potentially one contractor come in and do the foundation. And then the hangars are all built. And then potentially you have another contractor. The, in a perfect plan, we're going to RFP out for, for one contractor to sub out and do the whole project. But you'll have all the hangars, whether it's seven or nine, being built all at one time.
Okay.
And then you'll realize that revenue stream as soon as you start to get them, start getting them filled.
Gotcha.
So that's. Oh, go ahead.
Josh, I have a real simple question. You mentioned something about a manager of the airport. Where would he be housed in that area?
Yeah. So if we, if we ever get a staff person there, then that person would be in the office that we already have set up in the pilot's lounge now, which is right here. You know, the pilot's lounge is located there with the office and with the computer. Dave set us up with the phone and the, and the internet. So that desk is already there. The chair's sitting in there and, and it would have operations there. We've looked at potentially having a five to 10-hour person a week, even volunteering to be in there just to handle some of the concerns that are going on at the airport. And that's kind of our thought process.
Yeah. Well, I thought somehow it was, it was related to the hangar space as though it would be a place where the person that is the airport manager would have a place to have a, an airplane of his own.
No, sir. That wasn't part of it. But you know, heck, we could probably make that part of a pay plan that says if someone wanted to have that, we keep one out and that's how they virtually pay for some hours at the, at the airport. Really, this just, it was a, it was a, if this, then that kind of plan. If we generate a revenue stream, it could provide for a staff person and it could provide for the foundation for, for larger grants.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So Mayor, I was just going to say, those two items there, I took my screen back off and put you back to everybody. Those two items are the capital side of things. And the, the minutes, like I say, you have those to be able to review from, from the AAB, just to check through what they've got. The other side is a change in the zoning. Part of what we've looked at is the zoning at the airport. When it was put together, the thought was, hey, put in light industrial. This is the use that we're getting. This will, this will be a good opportunity. What the AAB has discussed as well as Roy is maybe we shift this over to a C4 zoning or develop a PDD so that, just like every other PDD we see, we would lay out the stipulations for how the property would, would operate. We get a little, there are some concerns with the way that it's laid out now, based on the property owners that are there, that the light industrial may not be the correct zoning for the overall property. And that's where that AAB conversation came in. And, and the AAB consists of multiple property owners that, that live at the airport. And so this came back from, from those guys. They would like for us, for the council to consider rezoning the airport.
You know, I could, and Ron can probably help me out on this. I want to say it was originally residential zoning. And back when we were going through the comprehensive master plan and the future land use, I want to say Dave Harrell was the one that brought it forward. And we went from residential to light industrial to see if we could attract some, some businesses up there. But as we can see, it hasn't happened. But if I'm not mistaken, it was residential at one point, not too long.
That's what Roy had said as well. And that's how the, that's how the growth and the change started to happen at the airport. If you recall, council elected to sell the one lot on the opposite side of the southeast side of the runway to a gentleman who was going to do a light industrial project, because that was zoned for that thing. And sadly, nothing's happened on that lot, but he purchased the lot for roughly $12,000. And now it too is just sitting there. But we, we want to have the opportunity. This is, this is good work by the AAB to bring these items to council for consideration. And we'd just like to see some of the comments back from council.
Well, I, I was going to say, I don't see anything that we should not take into consideration. So, you know, as we, as staff has time and, and priority, you know, I, I don't see anything that we should, should not look at, you know, we.
Well, and that, that was the comment I was going to make, Mr. Mayor. The, the change originated from a recommendation in the airport action plan. And it used the term, a change to industrial is a recommendation. But I don't think they meant that literally as a, this is the light industrial is the zoning district you ought to adopt. But I don't think that subtle difference was noticed. And, and the reason is because the, our light industrial district opens up uses that are probably not appropriate to the airport, like open storage and junkyards. And, and, and we actually have one or two of those that have started up there. And, and before that gets to be the predominant use, we thought maybe this needed to be looked at.
Very well.
And on the, on the, on the hangar project, Mayor, we can't do anything and bring it back to council until we get the approval from the FAA. As soon as we get that approval, and that's something Eric's working on with Roy, when we get that, we're going to go ahead and we'll bring that back to council and let you look at, potentially saying, yeah, let's, let's get some bids going. We don't want to go through a bid process until we get the go-ahead, though.
Oh, yeah, right. And, and yeah, I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think anybody sees this as something we're going to hit the ground running now. This is just, yes, we agree to, to, you know, move forward and take a look at this. You know, talking about the, the hangars and the revenues that it would, could potentially generate and whether it would present a salary for a part-time employee up there. You know, you can't say for certain. I, I know we, we did something like at the golf course where we offered up the ability to park your golf cart in a covered space by the city and lease it out for a certain amount of money. And we've had zero takers on it. And I don't think that would be the case here. The airport is way different than the golf course. And we have plenty of planes coming and going. I, I don't think that'd be a problem. But, you know, we don't know if we'd have enough money to pay for a employee probably for, you know, three, four, five years down the road.
We get so many calls about hangar space. The vacancy would be whatever occurs when you transition from one tenant to the next. You know, as soon as you can get somebody in there, they would, it would be filled as they, as they become vacant. I field at least four calls a month.
Gotcha. Does text dot have to approve us changing to C4?
No, no, not the zoning change.
Okay.
And I don't know what the right change is. I just, I think, what I was saying, I think the airport action plan was saying you ought to rezone that property so it can be used similar to the rest of the airport. And they just use the term industrial, because that's maybe what they thought those hangars were. But they didn't analyze our existing zoning order. You know, it wasn't that sort of in-depth study.
Okay.
So Ron, I have you signed up for number nine. Do you have anything that you would like to comment on at this point?
Same problem.
Okay. I'm going to turn my camera off.
There we go. Oh, now you're back on.
My camera, well, there you go. Okay. My camera's off now. We can hear you. Okay. Just a couple, three things. Three things. You can or cannot?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Three things. Number one, we have an airport that was approved about three or four years ago and nothing's really happened on it. That's another one of those plans that we did that sits on a shelf and nothing really happens. And now I'm looking at the current budget, toward the end of the budget, the CIP for year 21-22. I see $4.5 million of projects out there. And what you're talking about now is yet another set of projects, which are on, which are not on, the airport 10-year plan or the five-year CIP plan in the year 21-22. So what I'm seeing shaping up is y'all have got three disconjoined projects that aren't, haven't been reconciled by an airport board. And so I don't know what, what that airport board's doing up there. But it seems like all we do is we, we just list and none of them tie up a holistic plan. And I just didn't know when that was going to happen. So all sounds good, but nothing ever gets coordinated and done.
Yeah. So we may have to get with the airport advisory board and the, and the property owners association and say, hey, you know, this is what y'all have got in y'all's existing plan and your, these CIPs and stuff. You know, is that not what direction you want to take anymore or recommend? And then we have to look at it from the staff side and see whether we want to continue with the CIPs we have proposed or do we want to change the CIP to something else?
Mayor, that's what they're asking for. The AAB is asking to reconsider, for them to start the work to reconsider the airport action plan with the improvements, because they're looking at changing of times. You can say that the addition of the properties there at the entryway, that was achieved. The lot on the southeast side, that was on the plan, that was achieved. Creating tie-down spaces to create a revenue stream, that was achieved. And working on a couple of the policies up there, that was also achieved. So the, the items in that document of the improvement plan, we're, we're knocking off those items. I don't disagree that we need to streamline the process, but that's what the AAB has requested, is the opportunity to review the whole plan.
I'm just going to say, for the amount of money that's in these plans and the amount of effort that's been done, there's a big disconnect there. And I guess that's all I've got.
Can I make a comment about that?
Sure. Frank, go ahead.
Hey, the, the airport advisory board and the members of that advisory board and the rest of the folks that are up there at the airport and the users of the airport have been visiting and, and have come together with clearly, in my opinion, a holistic approach of what to do, when to do it, that will make money for the city. Secondly, they realized there are some issues and talk about time-consuming with what completely modifying the 2016 airport action plan. Rather, they proposed a lit, that, that, what Josh has said, in a holistic manner and visit with text dot and their staff and their expertise. And when, with the list and what they say and that input, and that comes back to the council and we'll get to consider. council, and we'll get to consider that again and modify the CIP or whatnot. But I have I and Roy, Roy is there too. Want to talk about wasting time? I think it's to try to redo the 2016 plan. That's that's it. That's a that's a long-term, difficult process. Rather, we do what Josh indicated earlier. It's called the AIP. It's it's a it's a much simpler process that lays out what you want to do when that Tech Dot helps us put together. And actually, we have to have an AIP. And so we're gonna work on that now. Does the 2016 plan go on the shelf? I li- I like the way that our chairman and the Airport Advisory Board and particularly the city manager have approached all three of these projects and it and do it.
Yeah, I think I think when we start, we start moving forward and looking at this, you know, any lack of effort on the 2016 plan, you know, we we have to look at that as part of our evaluating, you know, at the at the back end. Is there, what's the reason for that? Is it we put this CIP together in 2016, and since then, we've decided that or city, council, staff, airport, property owners, everybody involved, that those plans were not a reality and things have changed? So it may seem like a lack of effort, but it's truly, it's just because things have changed, you know? So we need to, you know, evaluate. We have to understand why there was a lack of effort on on certain things, so.
That, yeah, I would just report that the chairman and others in the Airport Advisory Board and generally have done that and will continue to do it.
Mr. Mayor, this Roy.
Yes, Roy.
I if I could add one thing, you know, the staff is is particularly cognizant of what I would call a critical path method, and there are certain sequences that ought to happen in a certain order. But I can assure you that that nothing we've done to date or plan on doing to date is necessarily inconsistent with the Airport Action Plan. There's nothing that we're contemplating doing that would prevent you doing any of that at a future point in time.
Well, this two points. Number one, I've been looking at this airport since 2010. I even helped put together the hangar plan for the east side of the airport, and nothing's happened in 10 years. And I mean, you want to make it personal about the airport, boy, I wouldn't try to do that. I'm just trying to say, I've sat there and watched 10 years' worth of inaction go on. And and it wasn't until recently that we got any kind of movement going on there at all. And now all of a sudden, we got some money in the bank, and it seemed like it's burning a hole in the pocket, and and now we gotta go out and rush something in. Maybe it's been thought out, I don't know. It seemed like we got three disjointed plans, so.
It's it's been thought out. It's been thought out. I would just report that, A, it's been thought out. It is not disjointed, and the staff has already begun to visit with Tech Dot, their staff, and they agree.
They're gonna pay big bucks.
It's extremely well thought through.
Well, you wouldn't know that by looking at the minutes, but the ones that he showed today was the first time I've seen that.
I agree with that. I I said something the other day that I really believe, Ron, that this staff has never spent as much effective time with this airport as they have in the last couple of years. And, you know, I think if we move forward with these projects, we're gonna begin to see the fruition of that kind of work. So I congratulate Josh and Roy and the and this Airport Advisory Board Chair for moving forward to get something done. You're saying nothing got done in 10 years? Well, these folks are.
I guess I'm just a little jaundiced, that's all.
No, I I don't, I can see why you might be. I'm just trying to report to what I'm seeing.
All right. That's all. Anybody else? All right. Well, we will move on to agenda item number 10 then.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Oh, yes, you can.
I move that we direct staff to proceed according to the Airport Advisory Board's recommendations.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, exactly which recommendations are we advising the staff to go ahead with?
One, two, and three?
Yes, sir.
That is the Airport Capital Improvement Plan that Josh discussed with us, the construction of hangars on the south end of the airport and rezoning of of airport from light industrial to something more in line with the airport, either something like C4 or a PDD or something like that. So, again, I I, you know, no timeframe, no whatever, but I don't see anything on here that we should not look at, so, you know, in addition to already what we have tentatively planned for there, you know, we gotta should bounce it all, look at all of it and make a more concerted effort if we're not doing so. All right, anybody else? All right. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. And we're Dave Williams. Arch Dabila. Tim Collins.
Hi.
Dick Weatherly.
Hi.
Frank Robbins.
Hi.
And I as well. So, staff, you have your direction unanimous.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, now we're on number 10. Uh, let's see. Discussion: Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Resolution Number 20-1840. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Laguna Vista, Texas declaring various property and/or equipment to be surplus property and authorizing the city manager dispose of such property in a manner which is beneficial to the City of Laguna Vista. If y'all remember, this was brought to us last meeting in our real estate discussion, whether to move forward during executive session. We've got a property owner that is wanting to build a fence, and they needed a small amount of property from the city in order to be able to build this fence and have it coexist with their neighbors properly. They were looking to purchase a strip of land that is 1 feet wide and 200 feet long. At that time, council gave staff the the go-ahead to negotiate this. And so we're we will be considering two things, but before we can sell the property to the homeowners at this address, we must declare this property, excuse me, surplus property. Uh, so that is number 10 is what we're considering, whether we want to make this 1 foot by 200 foot long piece of property, surplus property. Questions? Staff, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
All right. And I don't have anybody signed up for this one, so if I don't have any questions, it's open for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 20-1840.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Dick Weatherly, and it was seconded by Arch to adopt Resolution Number 20-1840, declaring this piece of property as surplus to the city. Let's see. And do we need, Aaron, do we need to make sure it says authorizing city manager, or does that include it in the resolution?
You're not on, Aaron.
It's in the resolution, Mayor. I see it there.
Yeah. Okay, so simply adopting the resolution is good enough then?
Yes.
Good enough? Is that proper English, "good enough"?
Close enough at 10:30.
Okay, well, I've got the motion and the second, and if I have no further discussion, Dave Williams.
Aye.
Arch Dabila.
Aye.
Hey, we heard him that time.
Yeah.
Tim Collins.
Aye.
Dick Weatherly.
Aye.
Frank Robbins.
Aye.
And myself is aye, so the property is now surplus property. And we go to 11. This discussion: Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Sale of Real Property Adjacent to 4,038 Outpost Trace. So now that we have a strip of surplus property, 1 foot wide and 200 foot long, the people that live at this address would like to buy it. And the price from our our real estate broker has negotiated is a price of $2.40 per square foot. This is 200 square foot, so it would cost them $480 to buy this 1-foot strip of land. Questions, comments?
Mayor, I'll just add that, as you already said, we did have our one of our real estate brokers negotiate this deal with the property owner, therefore satisfying the requirement of the law for how we can effectively dispose of this property.
Thank you for clar- clarifying that. Right, questions, comments? All right, nobody else is, nobody from the city citizens have signed up, so at this point, I will accept action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we authorize the sale of the property that we just declared surplus and authorize the city manager to complete the sale.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Dave Williams. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll go down the list. Dave Williams.
Aye.
Arch Dabila.
Aye.
Tim Collins.
Aye.
Dick Weatherly.
Aye.
Frank Robbins.
Aye.
And myself, aye. We will try and sell the property. Unanimous. All right, so now we'll go to agenda item number 12. Discussion: Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Sale of Real Property Adjacent to 20205 and 20207. Buchanan Cove or Buchanan? I'm from this area, I say Buchanan. This is property that the city has already previously declared as surplus property, so we do not have to go through that process. This is surplus property that we already have, and this is one of those 20-foot-wide, yeah, I think it's 20-foot-wide pieces of property that go run between numerous houses throughout the city that we have declared surplus in certain areas and that we are trying to make available to the homeowners, property owners on either side, that they would get half of each of these pieces of property. So the Dowling family has come forth, they're wanting to purchase the pieces of land, surplus pieces of land behind their two lots. I do not know, this does not give me, unless it's somewhere else in the document, it doesn't give me the total square footage, but the negotiated price is $1.40 a square foot for this type of property.
Mayor, this this total property is .04 acres or 1,805.22 square feet, so at that $1.40, the price will be $2,527.
All right, what was the square footage?
Uh, square footage, $1,805.22, 108,522.
Okay. There you have it. Questions, comments? All right. And I have nobody signed up, so no further discussion. I'll accept action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we authorize the sale of this property and that we give the city manager the authority to execute and complete the transaction.
All right, I have the motion, and who was the second? I'm sorry?
Tim.
Tim. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, I'm gonna go down the list. Frank Robbins.
Aye.
Dick Weatherly.
Aye.
Tim Collins.
Aye.
Arch Dabila.
Aye.
And Dave Williams.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries unanimous. I was trying to throw y'all off and go backwards that time.
I wasn't sleeping.
All right, Consent Agenda. We've already done 13, so we're on the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are to be considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Number 14 is the approval of the March 5, 2020, March 19, 2020 regular council meeting, and March 25, 2020 emergency council meeting minutes. Questions, comments, corrections, clarifications? All right, if I have none, I will accept action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the Consent Agenda.
I second.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Collins. Any further discussion? All right, going down the list. Dave Williams.
Aye.
Arch Dabila.
Aye.
Tim Collins.
Aye.
Dick Weatherly.
Aye.
And Frank Robbins.
Aye.
And myself, aye. The minutes have been adopted. All right, we will go into future meetings. Consider schedule and items for future council meetings. Uh, I'm gonna throw this out. I see us in the future having meetings on the first and third Thursday of every month.
What was it?
That's what you got.
I thought you were awake. I thought you were awake over there. All right, so our next meeting, our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting is May 7th. That is three weeks. We've got a break. But as you know, the way conditions are in the world right now, at any point, we could have some kind of emergency meeting, hopefully not. Uh, the way our declaration was put out and adopted, it is open-ended to go along with higher-ups orders, county and state. So right now. So right now we don't really have any changes to make other than some clarifications on things that I myself may have to do at at different times. As you know, we had closed the golf course uh, to personnel uh, last week, I believe it was last week, and things around this county and and stuff are starting to open back up. So we'll be looking at opening up our golf course again. So that's just one thing that we're changing and hopefully as the governor and people start opening up things for return to normalcy, I guess, or as they phase things in, we will start adjusting and we just got to see. You know, so future agenda items and and meetings, uh, just stand by. As far as I know, otherwise, I think we've got everything lined out. Is there anything that we need on the agenda that we haven't considered for May 7th?
Josh, you you had mentioned that weather emergency notification plan. Can you give us the various options that we'll have maybe at the next meeting?
I'll send out, I'll email out the the couple of options that we've received so far, and then we'll see if council decides that that we want to put out a formal R F P for a weather notification system. Uh, but that's what we're looking at. We're looking at a at a three phase, um, weather siren. Phase one would be for tornado. Phase two would be for fire. Phase three would be for something we determine a later date. So, um, we'd put two of these theoretically out in the city. And if something of extreme measure, just like the tornado of last weekend were to come through, we'd set the sirens off so people would know and not have to worry about getting text message.
So question on that. Do we get to pick the sound?
Definitely not. We're not gonna let the council.
Uh, I'm telling you, when I was in Iraq, one of the things that we used to do is, uh, the crying baby at 5,000 decibels. Dude, that'll 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 wake everybody up.
Yeah, we'll go standard ops on this one, Mayor.
Get a rooster.
Oh, no, if you haven't seen, if you haven't heard that crying baby played. Yeah, I would. That's torture right there. Okay.
Can we get an update on?
I'm not sure we need it in Lago.
Update, I'm sorry. Arch, did you have?
Can we get an update on how our mobile app is working out for us at our next meeting or something?
Yes.
Are people taking advantage of it or?
Yeah, I'll gladly give you the update then too, but as of right now, pushing enter, we're at 805 users. I'd like to get over the first thousand so that when we can start on the second thousand, but it's still the fact of the matter. If everybody says they want push notifications and faster information, all I can tell you is the app is the fastest way to get something to go to your cell phone. So for everybody that you know, if the if the 16 people on this right now aren't members, and I can pull up the numbers and tell you, then you need to download it and then tell the next five people that you interact with to download the app.
Gotcha.
Yes, Frank.
I don't know whether this is for the next meeting or not, but it just it may end up being a question. And I appreciate seeing the land use plan update on it. Uh, I think there was a consensus at our retreat that we also ought to be looking into a transportation study that would get us a new thoroughfare plan and traffic impact fees. Are we looking at that this year, Josh? We gonna?
Yes, sir. So we're actually, Mayor, just another update. We are actually the R F Q ended yesterday for the impact fees. And as soon as we can bring that to council, which will be at the next meeting, hopefully uh, to select that contractor, we will bring back the, we'll get the R F Q going for transportation plan.
Yeah, you you probably, well, okay. All right, thanks.
Josh, I see it has audit services on there. That's for uh, our annual audit, right?
Correct. You know, Mayor, the last couple of years, we've put that R F P out and we've received, it looks like, I think we've received two or three in Sandra's office, at least two up there in the corner. Uh, so we'll want to bring that back, you know, each time. Last year we had two, and I think we'll have at least at least three now this year and love to bring that back for council to review just because we've maintained the same auditor and we want to keep it, uh, we want to give everybody an option to have a fresh look on our operations. Soon as they're ready, Mayor, we'll present them to council.
Okay. I I thought was pretty sure that what it was. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Anything else? All right, so if there is nothing else, then I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:47 P M. Thank you all. Stay healthy.